Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and residents of Tulare City Staff and Council members to our Tulare City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 17. And with that, our call order, the next item that we have is our Pledge Allegiance and invocation. Tonight, our pledge allegiance will be led by our own Tulare Police Chief Fred Inglan. After the pledge of allegiance, if you please remain standing for our invocation led by Councilmember Terry Sayer.
Our Father in Heaven, we gratefully come before thee this evening in the capacity of the citizens of Tulare and the Tulare City Council. We pray that your Spirit will be with us, that discernment will lie within our minds and our hearts. We pray that we will bring unity to our city, that we will find a way to listen, observe, and take action on the needs of the citizens within our jurisdiction. We pray that you will help us to be wise and counsel, and we ask for thy presence to be with us throughout the evening in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Was this assigned? This wasn't assigned to anybody. Okay, all right. Okay, next. The next item we have is 3.1, which is proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, and I'm going to go up to the front podium. All right, good evening. And I'm going to be joined by our distinguished director, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Chris Ward. Good evening, sir. Good to have you up here. And with that, the Tulare City Council is honored to have this recognition for Parks and Recreation Month. And the city council and representing our communities put together this proclamation that notes whereas parks and recreation are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Tulare. And whereas parks and recreation promote health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas parks and recreation promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorder, and Alzheimer's, and many other ailments and flaws. I think with that, that the community can agree on a whereas is that we love our parks. Our parks have a beautiful enhancement to our community. It helps with our well-being. And of course, we want them maintained, vibrant, and provide recreational duties. And we're doing what we can to have some new parks, a new community recreation. And now therefore, we, the city council, the city of Tulare, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. And of course, for our community involvement, but of course, to our staff and all of our partners, we appreciate all that you do to keep our parks vibrant and beautiful. And Mr. Urbey will give my utmost congratulations to you. Thank you. And anything you'd like to speak to the community?
No, I'd just like to say thank you to my staff, our rec leaders, our office staff. They're the ones that really make everything happen. Library staff, senior staff, together, we're a good team and we do everything we can to help the community. Thank you.
And the last word too is also recognition to our Parks and Recreation Board of Directors. There are board appointees that are appointed by council that serve a community service role for the community. So really, we also want to recognize our Parks and Rec Board of Directors that serve the community too. All right. Thank you, everybody. It's me again. Good evening. What an item that we have, and I wanted to get my notes, that's not on our agenda, is also recognition of our Tulare Police Explorers. And who I'm going to invite to the microphone to give a wonderful update and share this incredible information is Joshua Avalos. He's the Tulare Police Department Explorer Advisor. Mr. Avalos.
Hi. So as mentioned, my name is Josh Avalos. Up here I have Jaden Gonzalez, Anna Niasse-Rahu, Serenity Veracruz, and Kevin Torres. So we have one that wasn't able to make it tonight. That was Lucas Martin. So the five of them participated in the Central Valley Law Enforcement Explorer Competition on the weekend of May 16th. They participated in 14 different law enforcement scenarios. And they actually placed, so I don't mess it up. I'm going to read it to you guys. So they placed first place in suspicious persons, first place in officer down, second place in active shooter, second place in ambush, third place in medical aid, and third place in building searches. So all of them, all five of them were able to participate in every one of those activities, except for the suspicious person. That was Jaden Gonzalez who did that alone, but the rest of it was done as a team. So yeah, that was just one of the biggest highlights. It was our first competition since I've taken over the program a couple of years ago, and it was fun and exciting.
Josh is being a little bit modest. So last week, we had our second annual Explorer Academy. We hosted 36 kids from four different agencies. And I'd like to take this time to congratulate our advisors. Peter Hernandez is here, Josh Avalos amongst a whole bunch of other staff members. But I really want to say congrats, kids. You always represent us well, and we look forward to you to winning, sweeping the whole thing next year. All right.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is item four, public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from acting on any matter not on the agenda. However, your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This is also the time for the public to comment on items listed under the consent calendar or to request an item be pulled from consent calendar for discussion purposes. Comments related to public hearings and items on general business will be heard at the time those items are discussed on the agenda. In fairness to all who wish to speak, public comment can be limited to a total of 15 minutes with each speaker allowed three minutes unless otherwise extended by council. To those who are not in chambers and wish to participate online or through phone, you can call 559-366-1849. So I do have some submitted yellow cards, and I will start with Linda Malloy. Good evening, Linda, and welcome.
I'm Linda Malloy. I'm the current president of Local Auxiliary, Amets Auxiliary 56. This is my second vice president, Vicky Gordon. We just wanted to advise you guys, we put up flags Saturday morning. We have this down to a science now. We get them out of the warehouse and in the pole holders in 40 minutes. That's a new record. So we had a lot of people that were going in and out of Winchell's Donuts, thank us for doing this. One gentleman even offered to buy us all coffee because it was too early in the morning to be up on Saturday morning doing this. But I did want to let you know that we lost six flags this weekend. Sometime between four o'clock on Sunday afternoon and 6:15 on Monday morning from the side down beside Well Fargo Bank to the alley. And we lost six flags and poles. We don't know where they went. We drove up and down every alley. And then those big poles, somebody was hanging on them and they bent them over this way. So we had two bent. We had two flags shredded and we had the clips ripped off of four. So we're not quite sure who it was. There was an issue while we were taking them down with some homeless people that we had that kind of accosted us. So this is not a complaint. I just want to let you know. We will be back on Fourth of July. I have a lot of flags. We have a lot of flags and a lot of poles. So I just wanted to advise you guys that there was some theft. So go ahead, Vicky.
Good evening. As she said, my name is Vicky Gordon, and the reason I'm here tonight is to talk to you about when we took down our flags. We were leaving the warehouse and driving down I Street. And I was just really shocked because there was a homeless person standing on the sidewalk between a house and a business and urinating in a cup and not really trying to do it subtly, you know, it was very obvious. So that was a concern. The concern being that I realized that it's not an easy task to deal with the homeless. But if we want our city to be a success for all our citizens and a call for bringing people to the downtown area, I'm afraid that we could be at a point where maybe we're failing at that. Just moving them to the temporary encampment doesn't seem like it's worked. It seems like they're walking around much more moving about. I think these people, what I noticed just personally, and I am definitely no authority, you know, I'm not authority on anything. But these people just don't seem like they want to follow the rules. And so trying to get them to follow the rules, I don't know how you go about that. It's like, are we either dealing with a drug issue that maybe we need to deal with in our community? Maybe it's a mental health issue that we need to deal with. My understanding is that that when some organizations have gone out to deal with some of the homeless and try to work with them, it's rare that we find a true homeless individual because they will usually accept some help. A lot of these people don't want to accept any help because they don't want to follow the rules. So I'm just asking and would encourage you to try to find a solution before we spend more money on beautification and pulling in businesses and new owners to continue with the challenge of the homeless. I think we need to try to figure it out, you know? I know that if I would not want to come and start a business downtown, knowing that I was going to have to deal with that issue. And I wouldn't want to bring my small grandchildren into downtown where you don't know what you're going to be dealing with, you know? You want to make sure that it's a safe place to be. So, but I thank you for your time and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Vicky. So another card I have is, is it Antonio Lopez? And if I'm reading it right. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Es muy preocupante verdad de que hay muchos lugares que yo creo que debemos de tener acción para que no haya mucha contaminación tanto al medio ambiente como a las personas, verdad? Y en tanto en lugares cerca de...
Yes.
Yeah. He was getting to the end of us.
Okay. Okay. Sorry. ¿Cómo se llama? Perdón. Antonio. Antonio. Okay. So she's discussing about contamination in the environment, I assume? I didn't catch all of it, so I was waiting for her to finish. Okay.
Si puede comenzar del principio o... Perdón. Del principio. Lo que...
Sí, cuando...
O el principio.
Si puede cuando... Te escuches. Si puede cuando dar una pausa para que le pueda dar, la intérprete la oportunidad de...
Atención, verdad.
Sí. Solo de una pausa cada dos sentencias.
Okay, gracias. Me comience. Que ponga un poquito, un poco de ayuda. Que haya poco de atención, verdad, en lugares que no están permitidos fumar por la cuestión de que hay muchos niños, personas adultas que nos afecta este tipo de humo.
Yes, of course. I'm waiting for her to pause, but she's wanting... Yes, of course. I'm waiting for her to pause. But she's wanting... Okay, of course. She's wanting some action taken towards smoking in the city. She's saying that children and adults alike are being affected by smokers in the community, and she wants action.
Y pues más que nada que tomen muy en cuenta, verdad? Todos estos recursos de que...
To take into account some of these issues.
Para evitar, verdad? Que la contaminación del aire.
Okay. The pollution in the air because of it.
Sea más mejorable y saludable para la humanidad y para el condado, verdad?
So in that all, altogether, it'll help prevent and bring well-being to the community and to everyone.
Y qué bueno que haya más contacto en todo esto, ese evento, verdad? Porque es muy bueno saber en, en áreas, tanto en restaurantes como en departamentos que nos está afectando este tipo de humo.
She likes the fact that there's proactive events or special events happening in the city that can perhaps provide information to the community or maybe taking action to prevent smoking in the community.
Para nuestra propia salud, verdad? Porque pues es muy importante que tengamos, por el tiempo que nos queda, tengamos más salud en nuestro organismo y no contaminación tocante a este tabaco.
Okay. So overall, she's just stating that we all want better health. And if we can prevent that from happening in our community, it benefits everyone.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Gracias.
Along with the same topic that I have is I have Maria Grajala. Good evening and welcome, Maria.
Good evening. My name is Maria Grajala. I live at Five Thirteen South Los Angeles Street. And I was attending this Viva Voices Inspiring Valley Action, which is a American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network project named Viva. And the reason I attended was because it was held at the Common Apartments, the new West Side Commons Apartments.
At Santa Fe Commons.
In Santa Fe, yes, there was. Anyway, so because I attended, I am not a smoker. My granddaughter has severe asthma. And I am very motivated for my community, especially the West Side. The Viva, the group of people that were here, that were with us together, we saw a presentation. The one thing that I was not aware was that the apartment complexes are non-smoking. But then there are people, of course, that, you know, they're going to be smoking. And I was thinking, maybe if these people that are smoking, they could be, you know, family visiting, you know, tenants themselves, maybe. But what I was told by the residents themselves is that there is no smoking area, even for the visitors of those people that live there. There, of course, they say that, you know, smoke travels with the wind and the people are, you know, health issues. There is no signage that I believe, I have not seen it myself, regarding smoking and whored-of-smoke. I do see it at the Mulcahy Roosevelt, the signage for their school with a big banner about, you know, their rules and distancing. They had participated with some youth volunteers to clean up Centennial Park. And they were picking up the cigarette butts over there. So there's a container that, that again, it shows they're out there, there's families out there. I mean, if you're going to be playing tennis out there with a puff of continuing cigarette smoke, it's not really that fun. But anyway, like I said, I'm very, very committed to community. And if there would be a way to maybe put up some signage, some direction for those that do smoke, I myself would appreciate that. I'm sure the residents of these apartments, besides the West Side, we have other apartments and new apartments coming up. So I just want to make Tulare a little bit more healthier, and I'm sure that everybody here would agree on that. So thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you, Maria.
Oh, and then if, if it's okay, I have some other contact information and everything's there. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Evelyn Long Walls. No. Good evening, Evelyn. Welcome.
My name is Evelyn Long Walls. I am a resident, a longtime resident of Tulare. I am an actual Tularean. I moved away. I came back here from Arizona. So, and I live at the Santa Fe Commons, and I am part of this Abiba that's going on. The problem that we seem to be having, everybody seems, about seventy-five percent of the people smoke at Santa Fe Commons or everywhere around. We don't have a designated area for people to smoke at. So everybody walks to the front, walks to the side, or maybe just walk where the parking lot where their cars are at, and they smoke. So we are asking, since no one they know, and so I was just volunteering information, if we can have a designated area. Therefore, it can help people who smoke. And also, you know, I've been there for a year. I am part of the homeless program, so I am one of those people. And, you know, I like being there. So if we can just have a designated area for the people to smoke. I don't smoke personally. I know people that do. And it would help everybody if we just have an area.
So in, in summary, if I have the summary right, Evelyn? And I think the group is, one, community-minded, as the information for Viva about smoke-free policies in a healthier community. And then clarifying in direction, that same topic at Santa Fe Commons. Yes. Now, the citywide, of course, we can look at those policies citywide. Santa Fe Commons is privately owned, but we'll surely pass that information on to the representatives at Santa Fe Commons. That for summary, was there, is there another point you wanted?
No, we just all came in here because we're, we've been having problems and issue with people that have asthma. And everyone's smoking everywhere because we don't have a designated area. And I think it's not only the Santa Fe Commons. It's anywhere that they're putting up the housing projects for the homeless. And they just need somewhere to smoke because even though they might be coming out of the encampment, or maybe they might be displaced like I was, the majority of people smoke.
Okay.
So they just need somewhere to where, who, people who have asthma or any kind of respiratory problem can smoke without smelling it twenty-four-seven.
Okay, understood. And thank you.
Okay. And thank you, guys. And this was some of the stuff that they did pick up at the Centennial Park?
Okay. All right. Thank you for sharing, Evelyn.
Yes, thank you.
If you don't, was that for us, or was that, you were just showing that?
We were just showing that this is what the kids and stuff from the Boys and Girls Club did pick up.
All right. Thank you, Evelyn. And, and thank you to the other speakers, Maria and Ms. Lopez, for coming and sharing. Is there anyone else in chambers that has public comment? Yes. Good evening. If you don't mind, if you don't mind using that one. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mayor, Council, and staff members. My name is James Cardoza. My family's business operates near Walnut and Blackstone, so up the street from the camp and across the street from the U.S. Cold Storage. Anyways, we've been having ongoing issues with transient activity, et cetera. However, first off, I want to thank Police Department, Code Enforcement, and Solid Waste. All three of those departments have been very helpful with, with the other tenants in our area and our, and our business with addressing the issue. I actually, a police officer also put me in touch with the parole officer for one of the people who's been a recurrent trespasser. I had a conversation with that parole officer, and so there's kind of an action plan to address that. But I wanted to propose a couple of other solutions that, that I've come up with from discussion with about a dozen other business owners, managers, operators in town, some of them who couldn't speak because they're either with franchises or they're in a corporate structure where they're not allowed to come without their legal counsel doing things. But one of the issues is the, being able to secure the, the commercial garbage corrals. You know, we're able to do it six days a week, but on the garbage day, the trucks come before the employees show up to work, I imagine, for being able to do parking lot clearance. But that means that when they shut down, we have to unlock it the night before. So what I'd like to propose is kind of like what you do on a lot of cattle areas, where you have a two-lock system. It's basically a long chain and a short chain with two padlocks. One padlock has a master key that goes to Solid Waste. The second padlock has a key that goes to the business owner. I'm not sure if it can be done, but I'd be open to having someone from Solid Waste come discuss it with me as a, as a pilot project. A second item to address some of the, looks like some of the homeless and transient and theft issues, it's really driven by meth addiction. You know, I know when I was cleaning up behind our garbage bin yesterday, the day before, I found a meth pipe. And I've talked to people on the street, and a lot of them, you know, their history is they got hooked on meth, and then they, yada, yada, they're on the street. I'd just like to see if it's not already done, that there be some earmarking of some of the budget dollars that are set for homeless to then be allowed to be used on drug treatment, if that's not already something in place. The third item, this is kind of beyond the scope of what we can do at the city, but it would involve some lobbying by the city. Right now, the State Assembly has AB Three-O-Six, which is kind of pushing to address some of the housing affordability issue by their proposing to basically lock in the current building code for the next several years. What I'd like the, you know, the city to do is potentially lobby the State Assembly and County Board of Supervisors to even include in that an exemption from code and permitting for habitable, habitable units of two hundred square foot or less. So this would be similar to the ADU policy, but with a little bit more relaxation. This allows the burden for creating really affordable housing. When I'm saying like, you know, twenty thousand to fifty thousand a door as opposed to two hundred and fifty to three hundred and thirty thousand a door, which is the current kind of standard for government-sponsored affordable housing. And then it allows that cost to be distributed throughout private property owners who have some extra land and could build a single, you know, a unit or two here or there. That's all. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
If, if I can, because I don't have a yellow card, if you wouldn't mind leaving your name and number with the clerk?
Yes.
And some items that city staff might follow up with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, like I said, the PD, Code Enforcement, Solid Waste, they've really been working hard.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers for public comment? Yes, sir? Good evening and welcome.
My name is James White, and I'm driving down Tulare Avenue, right past Mooney. They got a turnaround, a brand-new turnaround in the middle of the road. There's no sign saying that it's coming up on you.
Ja- James?
Fifty-five mile an hour is the speed limit, right up to you, get it right up to it. And you got a... A...
James?
A little sign saying fifty...
James, one quick, one second. I can hear you, James. I can hear you. But if you could speak in the microphone, so that way the legal gets it.
You got a yield sign with a fifteen mile an hour speed limit on there, and that's about ten feet away from the turnaround. So I think that's a death trap waiting on a place to happen.
Okay.
You know, and I've been doing traffic control for over thirty-five years, and that's a bad setup right there. Y'all need to tear that out and put in some four-way stoplights or traffic control lights. It'd be a whole lot better for that area.
Okay. Thank you, James. Yeah, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone on the phone? Okay. All right. With that, I'm going to move on to Item Five, Communications. City Manager, do we have any communications?
No communications.
Okay. Item Six, Council Reports on Items of Interest. But first, I'm just saying we have a special, well, not special, but we have an item on our agenda for July First, Council Meet, Council Meeting Cancellation. Is this just an item to report, or do we need action on this?
Action to cancel the meeting.
Okay. So council members, I'll kind of address this item first if we have any questions or comments regarding action for canceling the July First.
I'm just curious, is there like, I know the fourth is the following days, but is there like no agenda items for that, or I mean, what?
No, it's always a combination of us looking at what are the items that would be under consideration compared to council members' availability and those who would rather have an extended time off during the holiday. If council feels that they want to have this meeting, we certainly can produce an agenda. In fact, right after this discussion, we are going to mention that we are going to have to schedule a special meeting prior to July First. Senate Bill One requires us to adopt sort of a list of roadways that are subject to SB One funding. And unfortunately, we were not able to get that on the agenda for this evening. And it can't wait for the July First agenda. If we were to have the meeting, it has to be adopted prior to July First. So one of the other thoughts we have is if we cancel the July First meeting and replace it with this special meeting that also, you know, gives us the opportunity to address any items, it doesn't add another meeting to council's agenda.
Okay. I'll make a motion to cancel the July First meeting. All right, we have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Can we have a second? Councilmember Sarah, is there any other comments or questions? So with that, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll have a cancellation of the July First meeting. Council Reports on Items of Interest. I will start with the Vice Mayor, Mr. Harrell.
Six-nine attended the opening of the Bane, K-nine Bane Dog Park. Very well received so far. People have enjoyed it that I've talked to. It was, it was a great day that we were finally able to honor Bane.
Okay. Councilmember Segala.
I also did have an opportunity to attain the, attend the ribbon cutting and opening. And since then, I've gone a few times and have seen a lot of community folks use it. So I appreciate, you know, that we were able to, to get that open, and a lot of folks are excited about it, and hopefully it'll be used very well. I also wanted to, to mention two other things during this council time of interest. The first one is just, I wanted to thank all the folks who came last council meeting regarding the Tulare Cemetery District and concerns and issues that they brought forward. And since then, the Board of Supervisors, Tulare County Board of Supervisors have contemplated the idea of taking it over. There is a process by which they will go and have a public hearing and hear about other things. And one of the options is that they will remove all of the board members, the two of them that are left, three resigned, and put themselves as the Tulare Cemetery Board. And so I'm hoping that as that process moves forward, that they continue to listen to the community about some of the concerns, about the staffing, about the number of issues that are going on there, and that they, if they do take over the cemetery board, that they conduct, conduct their meetings in the city of Tulare. And I don't think there'd be any problem with them using our council chambers or our library to have those meetings. I would hate for them to take over, that they have all those meetings in Visalia. So hopefully, they will consider that. And then the, the final thing is that I just wanted to, to make a comment regarding what's been happening in our, in our sort of country the last couple of weeks. I've been called, I've, I've fielded a lot of calls from my constituents regarding the issue with ICE, what's going on across the country, the messages that are being put out there, where folks, a lot of folks, including myself, were very supportive of the idea of removing criminal... A lot of folks, including myself, were very supportive of the idea of removing criminals off our streets. Uh, getting them back to their home country if they've committed crimes in our community. But I think uh, what's happening is now everyone is in fear. Uh, I go to particular places here in Tulare and there are clothes, there, nobody's shopping, nobody's going to different places. Because now everybody is subject to being deported. And I think it's awful. That our community is in fear. I mean, I every other day get some kind of text that ICE is on Los Angeles Street. That ICE is over on I Street, that ICE is over off of Mooney. And I know I've talked to some of our, uh, you know, folks, uh, in, in PD and that's not the case. But there is a genuine fear out there and I do appreciate that our department. Uh, has made it very clear that they will not participate in any of the uh, you know, civil. I think there's a difference between civil warrants or civil work and criminal work. And that, uh, you know, I just want to make sure that our community is uh, uh, still able to call the police department in their time of need. And not be worried about uh, them being deported. And I know it's, um, just an awful thing that's happening and uh. Hopefully our, our businesses here, uh, won't be impacted, but uh. Just wanted to make that note because it is something that I've been getting a lot of calls on the last couple, last couple of days, so, so thank you.
Okay, councilman Maderos.
I have nothing to report. I did, other than I did attend the Bane Dog Park and. Also want to remind council and any staff that's going that, uh, we are hosting the June twenty sixth. Uh, sou- southern San Joaquin Valley Cal Cities Division, uh, quarterly meeting at the Tulare Historical Museum. And we're working diligently and, um, you know, to see to it that that gets put together. Uh, Thomas has done a great job and strong arming a couple of thousand dollars to help support that. Good job, Thomas. So, i- it's gonna be covered and uh, it should be a nice event.
Is it, is it the speakers or maybe we just need to speak clearer? Okay.
Do you want me to say it all over again?
It's just back here, it's harder to hear compared to right up here.
I can't hear it all, so we'll go, turn on my hearing aids. Um. I also attended the Bane Dock Park ribbon cutting, which was really a, a joyous occasion. We had many, many dogs there. And they were very happy and it was really a nice event. Appreciate the parks, uh. Department for, uh, having that event for our city. I en- attended the encampment meeting on the tenth. The Octo Pharma Plasma, uh, had their ribbon cutting, which is really a, a lovely facility and, and uh. I didn't know a lot about what they did, but they had some people speaking about how. That particular fac- uh, kind of facility saves people's lives and that was really exciting. Token Farms had their after hours mixer and I attended the Power of the Purse to support the United Way. And yesterday I attended the Tulare County Regional Transit Assos- uh, Association Meeting, so. It's been a busy week, couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think it's already noted by council members, it's awesome that we have a new park open. You know, our new uh, dog park and I saw especially the explosion of positive comments on social media. Um, so the word has, has really spread and it's good that we don't have anybody barking about negative comments. Um, with that, I, uh, I don't tell jokes up here. I just stick from, from not such things. Oh, yes, and then. Then you touched on, which is the bronze statue. That will be coming. Um, I failed to mention that in my MC of ceremonies. But the city will also have a, a bronze statue that will come for the recognition of Bane, for the Bane Dog Park. Uh, I also wanted to note that Tulare Baseball is having a golf tournament on June twenty eighth. And uh, will send a, a note to my fellow council members of, of possibly buying a, a ticket and, and helping that support for Tulare Baseball's fundraiser. And then, um, coming up is, is council member Madero said, June twenty sixth, the Tulare Historical Museum. I can attend that. And so I've scheduled, I will be attending that, that meeting on the twenty sixth, um, as well. And then to the clerk, coming up. Before that, June twentieth is the salute to dairy. And so, um, want to encourage if you're looking for, for a fun evening to. Recognize and participate in the salute to our dairy industry. That's, you can call the Chamber of Commerce. And to our, our city clerk, where I said I previously would not be able to make that event, I can make that event now. Um, that, a few days notice better than showing up the night before, so, um, with that. Okay, so in, sorry, in order, June twentieth is the salute to dairy. June twenty sixth is the San Joaquin Valley Cal Cities event at the Tulare Historical Museum. And June twenty eighth is Tulare Baseball's golf tournament. And the Clint Black concert. Oh, and we have the concert series.
And if council doesn't have, you know, they have, they draw prizes at, uh, this Cal Cities event. And maybe the grand prize from the city of Tulare would, if we have in our funds, is a couple of tickets to the Clint Black. Through, two or four tickets, whatever you think's appropriate. That might excite. The group. Does that sound appropriate, council?
Okay. No comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if council has that aspiration or desire, we can reach out to Spade Entertainment and work something out.
Okay. I. Any, no, alright, there we go. So, where's their consensus? Yes, okay. Okay, did I miss anybody? Tushal, alright. Stick to my agenda. Moving forward on the agenda, item seven, consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. Without discussion, is there any actions from councilmen to rem- remove items from the consent calendar?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove, uh, item seven point seven and seven point eight.
I'd like to move, uh, remove, move seven point nine for clarification, remove it from the consent calendar. And if there's no others, I'd make a motion to adopt seven point one through seven point seven of the consent co. You said seven point seven? Seven point six of the consent calendar.
There's a motion and then second, is there any other comments or motion or suggestions within that motion? Okay, hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, alright, we've approved items seven point one through seven point six. Uh, councilman Segala, seven point seven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, this item is an economic development update, uh, that, uh, the council's being asked to receive. And, uh, regarding the city of Tulare activity and I wanted to ask Jennifer if she could, uh, talk a little bit about it. I, I saw the document, reviewed the document, it's a great document. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and others who helped kind of suggest that. Uh, to allow us to look at what's happening in our city, a lot of exciting things. And so if, uh, Jennifer just wanted to talk a little bit about it, I know that, uh, the goal is to try to do something every, do every month. Uh, and, uh, it's a great presentation and, and I hope that, uh, uh, it's, uh, put up online somewhere so that the community can check it out.
Yeah, that is my attention that, um, I'll, um, be preparing this monthly bulletin, um, and putting it on the agenda. For you to, uh, receive that and then. Um, and after receiving it, hopefully the very next day, um, we'll be able to put it on our website. Um, so that is my goal. Um, I still intend to do a quarterly update to discuss, um, bigger projects or, um. Things that the, are, are, that myself and staff are actually working on, give you updates on that. But otherwise, I felt like maybe this monthly update, um, letting you know how many business permits or business licenses have been issued. Um, construction permits to see how busy we are with residential and commercial development. Um, a lot of things happen every single month and a lot of people don't realize how busy staff is in, um, getting all of this accomplished and that it all. Um, goes towards economic development. So hopefully this will give you and the public some insight into how we're growing.
I had talked to our city manager about, uh, perhaps considering, um, in future updates. To add a little bit about the, um. Uh, about the properties that we had set aside years ago. I think Mr. Nully was on the city council back then. Some of the properties we had set aside for, uh, to, for individuals to purchase, to be able to develop. Uh, in particular, right across the street. Um, and so if there was any, uh, updates either in the monthly or in the quarterly. Uh, you know, like to get a sense of what's that. There's one on K Street, there's the ones across the, the street that, uh. You know, a lot of us are anxious about it being developed. And so wanted to, to see that and then, um. Along those lines, also wanted to see if there was an opportunity to also include the, uh, status of our downtown grants. You know, we use some of the ARPA funds to assist, uh, some of our local businesses and trying to. You know, uh, develop, uh, some have been very successful, others have been still trying to figure out what's going on with them. So that could be incorporated in the monthly or quarterly reports. Cause I think it's important, a lot of people, um. You know, know that we have invested in downtown and so I think an update on those would be, uh, helpful as well.
We're happy to do that at the next month.
Yeah.
And so, Mr. Mayor, if there's no other, uh, questions from any of the council members, then I'd like to move to adopt, uh, item, item seven point seven.
Here we have a motion to approve item seven point seven. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
There's a second. Comments and questions? I just wanted to chime in. This is an awesome report to members of the community. If you see this bulletin, um, as councilman Segala touched on. Hundred and fifty six building permits, that total evaluation of over ten point eight million dollars. Over the period, there's over fifty business licenses, fifty seven mentioned, active projects that touch on with this. This is economic development in our community. Jennifer, thank you for putting this together. Awesome report. Council, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven point seven carries. Good stuff. Seven point eight.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, this item ha- is a report back on the community choice aggregation topic. It is an item that, uh, this city council approved in February of twenty twenty four. And so now in June of twenty twenty five, it comes back to us, um, as a staff report to, uh. Uh, to consider. Uh, this particular item, uh, is an item that is, uh, regarding what they call CCAs. Community Choice, uh, uh, Aggregation, which is a, which is a, uh, um. Sort of a opportunity for local cities to create their own power in terms of, uh, electrical power. You know, we have, uh, public utilities like Edison and, uh, uh, PG and E. And then we have, uh, public utilities. Those are called invest your own utilities where. People invest to make a little bit of money from how they produce, uh, electric rates and all that. And then there's public, uh, uh, owned utilities or similar like the, I guess the biggest one around here is the LA Department of Water and Power. City of LA has its own, uh, forty, uh, utilities. So the idea back in, uh, well, back in. Last year, January, when I first was bringing it to council was for us to consider that option. We were hearing a lot. From the mayor Fresno, Mr. Dyer, about PG and E and a lot of issues related to rates and the cost of the, uh, energy. And CCA is, is an opportunity for local cities like Tulare and others to come together and become their own utility. Uh, it wa- it's a program that, um, allows, uh, the, a joint powers agreement between. Different cities. I know I've been approached by Avenal, been approached by Farmersville. I think Ms. Gomez was the city manager. At the time when this came up over in Farmersville through, uh, council member Gomez, uh, Greg Gomez. And so there's a number of cities that have been interested in, in coming together to talk about this. And I appreciate that it's finally coming to council, um, but I think that, uh, it, it still needs to be, uh, there's work to need to be done. Uh, there is a consultant who had approached me last year about the idea of working with the city to determine whether this was gonna help. And the concept is basically that, just for example, city X, Y, and Z comes together. They are the XYZ Power Company and they provide. Electrical power to all the residents, commercial businesses and industrial businesses in those XYZ cities. They get to determine where to buy their power, whether it's nuclear, whether it's wind, whether it's solar, whether it's fossil fuels or whatever, they did decide. And then they basically are in charge of the revenue that comes in. But the company, in thi- this case would be Edison, Edison would still be responsible for the power lines. They would still be responsible for getting the electricity to the home. They would be responsible for fixing a fallen. Uh, uh, electrical pole, for blackouts and for billing. They would still be all responsible for that. And what the CCA would be responsible for would be setting rates, uh, for customers. Uh, they would be responsible for setting up, uh, programs that would give back some of those earnings because the CCA. Would not be an investor own utility. So their, their concern wouldn't be like, hey, we gotta get our shareholders a one percent. Increase, ten percent, however that process works. But the CCA would be responsible to its residents. If there was, uh. A savings and buying, uh, again, just as an example, uh, you know, a watt would cost twenty cents. Through Edison, through the CCA, that watt would cost maybe eighteen cents. And then that savings and then they still would be, you know, you can buy it for fifteen cents, sell it for eighteen and still make three cents profit. And use some of those profits to give back to the community through different discount programs. You know, I read, uh, Mr., uh, um. Our assistant city manager sent out a report. I read that report and it talked about a number of folks that are struggling to pay the utilities. Uh, the conclusion of the report basically said, hey, uh, uh, power, uh, electric rates are high and they're gonna get any, they're gonna get higher. And so I think this was an option for us to look at that. Um, I just strongly, I strongly believe that. That there could be more to present to the council. Uh, I think the, the consultants who, um. Who have been, who I've been talking to, uh, were willing to, uh, meet. I think they wanted to meet with the city manager. There's kind of been some. Meetings maybe here or there over the last year and a half that haven't really taken place. So, so I think it's, uh, uh, respectfully incomplete. What's coming to the council tonight and I'd like to see if we can continue to, to consider this and have the staff go back and meet with those individuals. Who can put together an assessment and analysis of the kind of savings and the kind of profit that would come from a CCA. And I think, uh, I, I just think that, uh, I appreciate that it came to us, uh, a year and a half later. But I, I, I just think it's incomplete and I'd like to ask the council to give staff direction to, uh, allow them to meet with those consultants. And then maybe come back in the next three months with, uh, a different perspective on what CCAs are all about.
If I may, I, I sat in on the original meeting and I think some of the things you've left out is that. Even if you put that together, um, the individual citizens can opt either into it or not into it. And I, I remember the original documentation showed that most who, who participated in it. Didn't really benefit to the level that they thought. Um, but. You're asking for council to make a decision when there hasn't even been a full presentation from, if you, if I may. Full presentation from staff. Mr. Gaffrey hasn't even presented this yet. Can we have his, uh, Mr. Mayor, can we have his presentation? And then we can talk about this.
Are we wanting this presentation at this moment?
Yeah, I mean, that's usually how it works.
Okay, well, no, the reason, fine, if it's council, it says receive a report. And then it says staff recommendation, staff will continue to monitor the CCA. So if I, I think part of what we have in front of us is to continue monitoring unless there's additional action. That, that this is bringing to us or for, I'm just, I'm just saying in time and monitoring time. And then exactly what the action is required of us. Cause I don't necessarily see it as a yes or no. I see the staff recommendation saying staff will continue to monitor the CCA.
Right, and just, just a point, just to.
I just want to hear from Mr. Gaff.
So before we do that, just a point, I'm not asking us to adopt the CCA today. Cause if we're lucky, if we started today, this CCA would probably be in place by the year twenty thirty. Isn't that, that doesn't happen next week. It takes a year and a half just to go through the C, uh, the PUC. And they only accept applications January first. So, uh, if we were to vote tonight, hey, we want to do CCA. I think this probably would be, we turn the switch on at the power plant or whatever in the year twenty thirty. So isn't gonna happen tomorrow. It ain't gonna happen next year, it ain't gonna happen next three years. All I'm saying is that, from my perspective, I've been waiting a year and a half. For this to come back to council. And unfortunately, I just think it's incomplete and I'm asking. To do diligence is to complete it by talking to the people who are willing to come and say, hey, this is how it would work for your city.
I, I know, but what I'm indicating is, I'm not in a position to make a decision to do that based. Based on the information we had before that was heard, there wasn't sufficient indication. There wasn't sufficient indication that it was worthwhile to go forward. Mr. Gaffrey's taking a look at it again. I I'd like to hear what staff has to say other than this short report before we make that decision.
Mr. Gaffrey.
Thank you. Um. The staff report very much speaks for itself that one of the big things with the CCAs and when you look at the current CCAs that are operating in California, they all represent different unique community priorities that caused the formation of them. And um many of them were centered around the community's desire to acquire um energy from particular sources, whether that was wind, solar, nuclear, that kind of thing, and change up the mix of energy um that was being delivered to their communities opposed to what PG&E, Edison or other investor-owned utilities were providing. Um, and then, you know, as I noted there, looking at some of the the literature that's been out there studying this, um, in terms of cost, um, there's an opportunity for cost to be reduced based on the type of um energy that's being procured. But one of the big things that was still um the most volatile is the um negotiations that have to happen between the CCA and the um and then in in this case Edison to still deliver that um utilities to the user's door. And that became kind of the most risky piece of it. And so that's how um in looking at that and in looking at um and looking at these reports, it's it's not from a cost-saving standpoint. Um, it is uh perceived as a risky cost savings compared to um self-operated utilities like an irrigation district or that kind of thing and the continued um as you've seen with other cities, um, you know, whether they're lobbying the CPUC or others um in addressing the the costs being put on ratepayers from investor-owned utilities. Um, but if there are specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
To a certain degree, um, first of all, what kind of staff time are we talking about?
I I mean, thi- this is something where it's the ac- in kind of staff time in terms of-
The city of Tulare staff time to put this together and and uh-
I think I could probably answer that a little bit better than Thomas. When I was at the city of Rockland, we did enter into a CCA. And so um when Rockland, this is Rockland's experience, that doesn't mean it would be Tulare's experience. But when Rockland decided to do it, it was largely a politically driven decision, not a staff-related decision. And uh it was with the intention of saving money. And as Councilmember Sagala mentioned, it will take several years to do that. The first step is to study he discussed. The results of the out or the outcome of that effort were not in line with the study that was produced. At the end of the day, they did not really generate the savings they had hoped for. Doesn't mean that it wasn't worthwhile endeavor. There were some savings. They weren't anywhere near what they had hoped or expected to receive. Um, the staff time wasn't necessarily significant. There is staff time involved, but it's largely what'll happen is i- i- it depends on what you wanted to do. If you wanted to create your own CCA, I would say there'll be significant staff time. If you, and that would not be our recommendation if you wanted to move forward. If you wanted to move forward with this, uh, my recommendation to you would be that we would look at joining a CCA, right? Something that's already existing. And uh that will be less staff time. And it's not because it's about staff time, it's because creating a bureaucracy from from scratch is an arduous process, especially when you don't. The only experts we would have would be the consultants we rely upon versus interviewing all the CCAs that are in existence and determining which one is best suited for us, which one is interested in us joining them. But again, you could create one if you wanted to from scratch. We didn't do that in Rockland necessarily. We we started partnering with other cities. We created one that sort of rapidly worked into creating, you know, other parties and other cities joined into it. And so you know, there are some different options here. I apologize for the year and a half wait for Mr. Sagala. I I had previously asked what were the priority projects that you guys were looking for us to investigate? This was not one of them. This was one of the ones that we were working on when we had time. Since I had already examined it, our prior ACM had examined it. Uh, I wanted to wait till we had a new ACM on board to have them separately, independently look at it from their perspective as well. Hence, he's been on board maybe two or three months. That's why you have the agenda item in front of you. So we're happy to answer any other questions, whatever council's directive in action is. I would just tell you if this turns out, I know Councilmember Sagala's recommendation or request that we simply for no fee contract with the consulting company who will do the study. And if that's council's directive, so so be it. Um, I would say that the next big decision point would be, what do we do with the study once it's done?
One last question, if I may. The success as far as savings is concerned is um based on commodity concept, is that correct? Where, I mean, to be successful, you have to read the market. Go, that that's what I came away with when we had that meeting uh in what's now Jennifer's office. Uh, the consultant had uh uh came in on a Zoom call, I think. Wasn't that what it was? Jose? Was it as A- Addison rep? But it's it's commodity-driven. Basically, they they have to go out and play the market, so as to speak, and and buy the buy uh uh futures as it relates to energy costs.
Yes.
And if that's not done correctly.
Yes.
It could turn out to be a a loss as opposed to a gain. So basically what you're saying is you've got a bureaucracy, governmental bureaucracy that's going to handle you uh utilities, energy costs better than the pre-existing Edison that's that that we have now. And citizens have to make a decision, do I go with it or don't I go?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. And and you know, it, there are, there are some, you know, Edison has charges that they tack on, obviously, to their distribution of energy. We're still gonna pay the distribution costs across their line. We're not talking about creating a new electric utility and installing new distribution lines. At least that's not what I've understood. We're talking, we're talking about a typical CCA, which is just purchasing power in the open marketplace like any other utilities would be. Um, I think that, you know, the the part of the challenge with that is there are CCAs that have gone bankrupt. Right? So some, not all CCAs are created equal. To to Thomas's point, some of the CCAs that were created, in fact, many of them, from what we've observed, are are not necessarily driven by let's come up with a way to save as much money as possible. It's more driven by we want to be more environmentally friendly. We want to diversify the portfolio of energy sources that we're purchasing from. We don't want to buy energy from coal production plants, right? Those types of things where we want to be able to offer our citizens um some other means to improve, you know, um, on on their protection of the environment through their energy uh purchases. It it's kind of more driven by those kinds of policies. Uh, and council could have them, you know, we haven't got into the weeds to discuss those either. That I would assume if we went and did the study, that would be another outcome of that effort is what are council's objectives and policies? It could be saving money, it could be some other. I know Councilmember Sagala in the past had mentioned something about offering discounted rates uh for folks on the west side or low-income individuals and, you know, could that be studied? I'm sure that could be as well. Uh, so, you know, again, staff is available to follow whatever lead council wants to step. I would just say to you, um, you know, whenever that point would come in terms of you wanting to invest, if you want to go in this direction, I will want to be able to give you a better estimate of staff time involved because we have a number of other providers you've already given us.
Sure.
If we went with this program, would we have to pay Edison a fee of some kind or?
Right now, no. Right now, the the study that would be done would be free. But if we decided to move forward with that study, as Thomas mentioned in his staff report, there is typically some type of fee that is paid and it's um it's a fairly nebulous, um. It's hard to tell you what that fee will be. We'd have to get into the room with Edison and have those discussions to determine that. I'm sure the consultant would be har- part of that effort to figure that out. And we, I don't know what that answer is right now, what the fee would be.
So if we paid that fee, it went on the program and it didn't work out? And we went back to Edison, we got to pay a fee again?
I I've not lived that experience, um, so I don't have a definitive answer for you. I would not be surprised if that were the case, but I I don't have a definitive answer.
Right. So so, Mr. Mayor, I think what what I just kind of analogy mentioned, Mr. Maderos might kind of understand where I'm coming from. It's like if we're going to trial and the judge only works with the uh, you know, plaintiff's side and totally ignores the defendant, but yet renders a trial and the defendant is like, oh, well, you guys, no one ever talked to me. I never gave you my side. I never gave you my two cents on how this would work. I think we're going way far from where I'm intending to do. All I'm asking is that that for me, it's incomplete. The people that are the experts did not weigh in on this. Edison by law is required to make CCA happens. The gentleman said, hey, we'll get in trouble if we tell you not to do it. There is legislation. This has been around for a long time. All I'm asking is that we go back and have staff meet with those consultants because you know, I didn't really want to get into the weeds, but once you get past the PUC, there's two ways to operate it. Us five could be the board of utilities for the CCA or we can do uh uh what they call is, uh, what's the determined development uh turnkey? Where there's a company that says, hey, for X amount of dollars, we'll run everything. We'll do the advertising. We'll be the ones that pick up the phone for the eight hundred number. We'll do all that. I mean, there's just so much down the road. It's like me saying, I want to go to the outlet, but then all of a sudden, we're all trying to get to Dinuba, you know, in terms of like the steps. So all I'm asking is that 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 we direct staff to meet with these consultants to say, hey, what's the other point of view? And come back to council and then decide again, we're not deciding for a CCA tonight. All I'm asking is that we complete a process, which I don't think is complete.
Well, what I, what I heard, and if this semi-correct is, step one in the process though, is that there is a free report that could be direct. So I I think from my listening to it is not getting too far ahead. And what the saying is, do we want to do the free report or not? And the thoughts along the free, a free report. Now, the free report doesn't take time from you. I-
Uh, it will have some staff involvement. I wouldn't consider that to be subs- substantive involvement.
Okay. I myself, I I don't endorse the CCA method from my research and what I'm seeing of how the CCAs and their and their procurement of what they go about in purchasing. Uh, it's more like purchasing currents, but it's also, I think, part of the background that it's a procurement towards more costs compared to cost savings, I would say towards an environmental movement. However, I think if the city's in a situation and we want to do study, I look to the council members of of direction on this. I I didn't take this that this was a yes or no myself. But if we're wanting direction as Councilman Sagala is saying, I think we give direction towards I, the first step, what what does council want to do? Um, entertainer, motion or direction from council members?
Well, I think my my direction would be to to uh direct staff to meet with the individuals who will talk about CCA, about the possibility of doing an assessment or a study on what positives could come to the city, come back and at that point, you know, let the city decide, let the council decide if there's any next steps. But I'll tell you this, that is barely, well, this I would consider step one, that would be considered step two, probably in a fifteen, twenty, twenty-five step process. So we're not becoming CCAs tomorrow. So that would be my direction is that we we uh direct staff to meet with those folks.
When you uh talk about this as the first step to a fifteen, twenty-step process, you're not promoting your cause in that kind of situation. So it's got a long ways to go based on what's indicated. And I think that's some of the hesitation I've had is I don't see this ever happening after sitting in that previous. Uh, I I don't see a big game. I don't see a uh enough of our community being willing to participate in it. And I think in the long run, it will end up being a waste of time.
That may be, that may be the case, but the the next step is not gonna cost you staff time.
I was gonna say, whatever council decides as a consensus, obviously, I'll go along with it.
Okay, we have, and we have a second. All right. We have a motion and a second. I want to understand the action. That action is to do the free study or Sagala is your action to move forward in additional research and additional partners around the CCA?
Well, I think the what the next step would be that the consultants would have a better understanding. I'm not the expert on CCAs, but they have better understanding what would be the next steps to bring the council that would include research and assessment and analysis if there's even worth doing. Uh, basically, they're like Genji. They will take your bills, they will do an analysis, they'll figure how many watts used in the city, they'll Edison procures them data. Uh, you know, one of the things that that would be requested, they would need the city's permission to get data to give uh to get Edison, to give them all the data. And they do that kind of analysis and then they come back. So that's, that would be the next step.
So your, your action is granting permission for consultants who want to provide a report to us to be able to provide that report?
To do that. And they come back to us in a couple of months. It's gonna take a few months.
I just wanna make sure.
That's the free report would bring us that kind of information or you're talking about additional consultation?
No, the idea is it's not gonna cost the city a dime, other than maybe some staff time. It's not gonna cost the city a penny. Yeah, I mean, I I I wouldn't say reporting, more like an analysis than a report.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll poll it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm gonna say nay. It's two to one? Any abstentions?
No, it's four to one because we didn't vote. Is that right, Melissa? Thank you.
Thank you, council. We have our direction. We will get in contact with the consultant.
So if there's no opposition, a two vote would carry it, is that correct?
Yeah, there's there's, if if they don't vote and they're here, it bounces towards the efforts.
Okay. All right.
As cleverly stated in our policies.
It's all right. We're moving forward to seven point nine, City of Tulare Merit System Rules and Regulations, Mr. Maderos.
The only reason I asked that this be polled was that I I I didn't quite understand the section eight oh nine management leave aspect. It talked about sixty-four hours of management. And and the word leave was out of there, but leave per year. And then later on, it talked about thirty-two hours and that this was implementing the amendment. Can you clarify that?
Sure, I'd be happy to do so. In page one twenty-six of your packet under section eight oh nine per management leave, um, it is called out on the redline version, non-sworn middle management are allowed an annual buyback option of up to thirty-two hours. So even though they accrue a higher amount, they can only do the buyback up to thirty-two hours. And that was approved on their last um bargaining agreement. And this change just updates the language and the rules and regs. Um, so they can't cash out all of it. It's just up to thirty-two hours. And it's only middle managers.
You said page one twenty-six?
Of the agenda packet?
Section eight oh nine.
Section eight oh nine?
Yeah, your printed packet doesn't have the numbers on it.
Yeah, that, I don't have a reference to that. On the uh, on the
Yeah.
attachment or the uh what am I looking at here? The resol- previous resolution. It would be, you said eight oh nine?
Section eight oh nine.
Yeah, City of Tulare Merit System Rules and Regulation, section eight oh nine, right?
Yes. Page thirty-one of that package.
That's it. Okay. And that, that's a modification that implements what the agreement was.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second for approval of seven point nine. Is there any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven point nine is approved by vote.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on to uh the next agenda item, the public hearing, can we uh I I think we indicated previously that we move it up in the agenda as much as we could for the the emergency shelter operator term sheet. And I also, I know the deferred improvement agreement, items nine point one, nine point two. Can we go to those uh general business items as to fulfill a commitment we had indicated before?
Yes, I I will propose that we move to item nine point one, emergency shelter operator term sheet preliminary operating agreement. Is there any opposition, council, on that? Concerns? Madam Clark, does that, you have that down? All right. So with that, we're gonna move to general business and we're gonna bring up nine point one, emergency shelter operator term sheet preliminary operating budget. Mr. Naya, Mr. Correos.
Council, before we do that really quick, as we move into that item, just, you know, again, this was a carryover from the last meeting. We're pleased to be here this evening to discuss this important- We're pleased to be here this evening to discuss this important project, something, as you know, we've been working on. All of us collectively for some time. I just want to remind council sort of how we got here. You'll recall that. We had a process by which we issued sought proposals from companies or nonprofits that had an interest in operating the homeless shelter and our. Pre-submitting meeting, we probably had about five nonprofits that showed up that had an interest. At the end of the day, we had two nonprofits that submitted proposals. Council appointed, I believe it was. Mayor Isherwood to be part of that committee process. I think. Councilwoman Sayer stayed sort of actively involved in monitoring and reviewing that information. And um. Uh, the, the entity that the committee recommended we move forward with is the Lighthouse Rescue Mission. We're all very familiar with them. They're here in our community, they have been for the past five and a half years or so, maybe more. Um, actively working with the homeless community and our individuals. Um, through their project, um, this is a big project for all of us and for them and. They have stepped up and vindicated a desire to work with us to be our operator. Originally, when we issued the RFP, our hope and desire was we would have just the turnkey opportunity where we would just hand the keys to someone and say. Good luck, you've got this, take care of all of it. And that was probably uh not very realistic. In fact, some of those other nonprofits that we had talked with. Shared that, you know, they don't necessarily even have, they themselves, those entities uh don't have the capacity, which is why they didn't submit proposals. I think some of them also have maybe a little bit different philosophy in terms of how the shelter would operate. Then perhaps the philosophy that we've been operating under. We're very pleased that Lighthouse Rescue Mission has. She, very similar philosophies that we do in terms of, you know, what our goals and objectives are. Uh, we've spent some time since that committee recommended them, working with them to develop this term sheet. This term sheet is. Specific to them, while, while it's generic and general in some aspects, right, anybody we would have as an operator, there are some basic terms in there, right? How are meals gonna be served? How do you intake people? So on and so forth. Um, this is the outcome of us actually sitting down and working with them. Through how they would intend to operate it and what role the city would have. And so in this case, the city has a bigger role than we originally anticipated. Overall, that role is related to financial control. And we're, so we're not really the ones that sort of. Um, it's not the right word, but we're not the ones that deal directly with the homeless individuals, it's the lighthouse that does. So that's the overview I wanted to give you. I'll turn it over to Mario or Alexis or whoever is gonna go from here.
Uh, thank you, Mark. Good evening, council. Um, just uh to summarize the staff transmittal. It's exactly as Mark laid out, um, when we originally started this process and when the RFP went out. You know, we thought maybe there'd be a turnkey operator on board. So over the past twelve months or so, city staff from various departments. Have met with the Lighthouse Board, with the Executive Director. To essentially, what you see in front of you in the, with the term sheet is essentially roles and responsibilities. As we know them now, in this, in the reality that this is gonna be more of a partnership model, um, as Mark mentioned, so. Uh, the city will have uh more significant administrative and uh fiscal oversight, um, you know, administering some of the grant funding. Obviously, the budgeted uh portion for operations. With the lighthouse doing kind of what they have been doing in the community, which is operating kind of the day-to-day operations of, of a shelter. Uh, they've been doing overnight, this is gonna be uh not an overnight facility, but a twenty-four hour facility. Uh, you know, a lot of it will be through referrals, we'll be partnering with the county and nonprofits. Kind of like we have been, right, at the encampment, except this is gonna be a permanent facility with. Um, significant amenities, uh, there will be additional rules and responsibilities, both for guests as well as for the operator. And so that's what's in front of you is this is a, it's been termed kind of a non-binding term sheet that lays out those. Basic roles and responsibilities, and if approved tonight, the next step would be to continue to meet with the lighthouse. To get into more detail on these essential roles and responsibilities through what's called the operator agreement. And the policies and procedures for, for the facility over the next, you know, less than a year now, from when it will be um open. And with that, we are in the midst of budget, uh, and so we've included. A budget forecast for the operational costs. And so in the, in, in the first fiscal year, some of that will be split with the continued operations. Of the temporary encampment until the permanent facility is open. Um, but we thought it would be beneficial for your council to see the full cost of a full fiscal year. As we start looking into planning for, you know, around this time next year for, for next fiscal year's budget. And so that's what's in front of you is a budget that you'll notice in the staff report allocates an amount up to a certain amount. Um, you know, as the lighthouse and city staff continue to work, there might be opportunities. Uh, for some cost savings and efficiencies, so that cost could come down. If we need to make adjustments at mid-year, that's also something that's available. But this evening, it's really laying out the roles and responsibilities of, of this relationship between the city and the operator. And uh providing a budget so that if approved this evening, the next step would be to then get into the details of an, of a binding operator agreement. Contract, if you will, as well as continuing to refine the budget, um, hiring and everything that has to go while the, while facility is under construction. Um, but that's uh staff, uh various staff is available this evening to answer questions uh that your council may have. Thank you.
Okay, we had the materials um in front of us for this time, so. Really, I'm gonna jump in then for council questions, comments. Okay. Staff, staff presentation. I was, I wasn't gonna skip it completely, I think you're just going through some of that, but we'll open that with public comment. So we'll open public comment for nine point one. Is there anyone in chambers who would like to speak on this item? This stage? Do we have anyone on the phone? Okay, all right. I'll close com, public comment for right now. So. Hey. I think as, as uh Mark gave the opening, and I feel as well, to, to jump in and to start with this conversation. The process that we had in reviewing the RFP and starting the discussion amongst. Operations, a operator agreement, and council had assigned me to be a part and to participate in this committee. Uh, many reviewing, as Mark had touched on, there was many uh discussion points with staff that took place. And so with that part, I want to say, as, as Mark said, we had certain operators, they did not apply for the RFP. We reviewed the RFP, and in that, there was really a vetting between. What, what was the overall plan that council had with, with our, our. Home, homeless shelter, a navigation center, a combination between the two. And therefore, as Mark had said, really, to get where we needed to go, what was the strengths that needed to be applied? So we had an operator in front of us, what were the strengths that could be exercised that we felt was mutually discussed and beneficial to meet operational goals? And where were the strengths and weaknesses to where the city had the best role to apply our strengths for administrative compliance? Uh, fiscal, as touched on. Here, what we have is from my perspective in this emergency shelter operator term sheet, is as Mario touched on, it's the terms for operation. And through that too, is there was uh conversations, um, and I've heard conversa, I've heard concerns and questions from the community. Um, you know, fellow council members and others that will touch on. Hey, capacity to address this, how is this being paid for? How's this facilitated? And, and wanna open that for, for discussion and Q and A. The, the part that, the way I frame it is that, and I share this, and, and Mark and Mario can correct me. Is that lighthouse in this operator agreement and this combination we set forth. Is not all on them to address every operational component. We're gonna have third party. That's gonna come in for services, you know, service programs, the city, as I already said, will have a role. There's going to be a, a really bifurcation between items of what lighthouse is assigned to do. And in my layman's way, would say the people operational points of it. We're gonna play a role with the kennel, there's, there's just other areas. So when we look at staffing or we look at funding. I, I just want to encourage to keep in mind of. There's a city role and then there's lighthouse role, and I want to make and understand, my perspective of this and understanding is. Not everything, all inclusive, and what we have in this report is to the responsibility of lighthouse. It breaks that out of what those roles are. So, and we can touch on those surely amongst the agreement. The other part, understanding of what we're going through here tonight, this isn't the final agreement, what we have is the operator term sheet. And the operator term sheet bridges those two items uh together. So um if that's kind of helpful to set the stage of how we got here tonight. Was the review, that vetting, working through this, what staff had put together is that operational sheet. Um, and my understanding, this isn't brand new to lighthouse tonight, they've had this as well, and it's a work in progress. And we're here tonight to give that input, and we're here for this operator sheet and to address any concerns and questions we have. Um, on that, if that's a fair summary. So with that, I'll, I'll start to my left with uh Vice Mayor Harold.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, I have no uh questions or concerns in regards to this term sheet as presented tonight.
Councilman Sagala?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, um, I appreciate all the uh background and the uh process for which. Was ta, has taken place to get to this point tonight. I know it's something that we have been. Uh, talking about contemplating, getting some uh updates here and there as a council. But uh I think uh what, what I wanted to um to say is that uh on the process itself. Before I get into some questions regarding the term sheet and uh I'll le, I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Mayor, if you want me to ask a few and then go around and. Come back as, you know, I've done as a mayor, to kind of keep the flow going. But I think for me, what uh. What I'm a little disappointed on is the fact that um, you know, as a council, we never had the opportunity to. Uh, follow up on the RFP process. We did have uh the RFP go out, we did have a committee. We did have a process, we did have staff uh in that committee determine how it's gonna move forward. But uh as Mario stated uh more than a year ago, probably a year ago. It's never come to council for any formal discussion. So tonight, what we have before us is a term sheet. That's very important in the, in the key step in, towards the opening our shelter. That, uh, I mean, the way I see it and the way it's been described to me and the way I read it, it's uh sort of all or nothing type of situation where we have to. You know, uh, uh, make suggestions on the term sheet, but then we are sort of um. Um, locked in with the operator. And I think one of the things that, that I wanted to kind of share is that um. You know, I, I, I know the board members and the executive director of the lighthouse, and, and I know they do fantastic work and a number of things, but. I think uh I have been approached by a couple constituents and I have also had my own. Uh, concerns about uh a number of generic things versus the term sheet. Uh, the term sheet kind of uh expands on those concerns in terms of how it's developed. Uh, there are questions about staffing, who gets to do what, capacity, but I think for me. Uh, as I've talked to the city manager, and I appreciate the time with the mayor the last couple of days. Um, is it just some concerns that I have in terms of capacity? In terms of the ability for, for uh the nonprofit to handle this, this is the feather in our cap. This is something that uh for the, for last, you know, since I've been on council pretty much eight years. We have spent almost a lot of, we spent a lot of money. Any money that's come in, we send it to the homeless versus kids or other types of priority. Well, we did have a dog park and other things, but. I think that uh, you know, it's, it's something that's very important to us. And I just want to be able to be satisfied. That the capacity is there, that the finances are there, that the cash flow is there. That a number of things are there so that we can, you know, move forward in a partnership as was stated. Regarding this homeless shelter, and I, I'm not quite there yet, doesn't mean I can't be there. But I'm not quite there yet in terms of, I haven't met with anybody uh from the lighthouse. I know the city managers offered to facilitate those meetings. But I think for me, it's more like, you know, I wanted to have that kind of discussion with uh my fellow council members. But I've been told that there's no other process than tonight. So, you know, I have to make my concerns public in regards to. This is what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about capacity, cash flow, the, the, the ability to handle th, this big project. And so that's, that's my thing, and this is the only forum. That I, I've been asking for months and months, and everybody's been watching these last three council meetings, I've been continually asking like, hey, when can we talk about? This, so I guess tonight's the night.
You, you got the floor.
So I think, uh, you know, Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I'm not sure how, if you want to bring them up or if you want to wait till we. Cause I think the way I see it is two approaches. For me is direct questions to the lighthouse leadership. And then some suggestions or comments on the actual term sheet itself. So I'm not sure how you, do you want me to do the term sheet first and then ask questions, or I'm, I'm not sure how you want to approach that.
Sure, I, if, if I could. We had a process and our mayor was part of that process. I think. He came to the conclusion, along with the rest of the group, that lighthouse was who we would go to, go with. I think to a certain degree, to the extent that you have those doubts, I think you should ask the mayor. Because he participated in the process itself. Ask him the question.
Well, I understand it, but I, I, I mean, they're willing, they're not willing to answer questions, I think they are willing to answer questions.
That isn't what I said. I said, ask him the questions.
I've been asking him questions for the last two days. He's been very, he's spent two, three hours with me in the last couple of days, cause there's.
But you didn't ask those questions with everybody here. Ask the mayor the questions with everybody here. Let's hear the answers.
Well, I mean, uh, well, first of all, I think, Mr. Madero, first of all, I think. The, I, I just have, I mean, if everyone else is comfortable with the process of how. They became the, becoming the operator, that's fine. I just don't, I just think it never came to council. It was never discussed and it was never voted on officially. And so that, that's the first thing.
I, okay, on your first point, I, I may not arrive at the conclusion that you want me to. Until you ask him the questions about the process. You've questioned the process, you've questioned the capability. He and the committee came to the conclusion that Lighthouse Rescue Mission was who we should go to. Ask him the questions and then allow us.
I mean.
Wait a second, and then allow us to hear your concerns. Go to, go to the mayor and ask him the questions.
Well, I mean, I have, I mean, he and I have had some frank conversations. If he wants to, if he wants to publicly share. He wants to publicly share, then that's on him.
No, I've said that the, the environment here tonight to those concerns, it's an appropriate environment. That we, you, you, the community and others have these series of questions. Now, if you, with all due respect, per se of monologuing towards that is the venue and, and it's appropriate, I think. Ask the questions, uh, you have the council members, we have the operator here. And I think it's fair when, and I'm happy to start, is regarding capacity. I think to your concern, and, and it's okay to put that out there, as I've shared. What's, what's the dynamic of, of the capacity? Is it, you'd said about cash flow and some others, but to capacity, is it the capacity of the. Organization they're planning to meet staffing patterns, is it capacity to meet the areas with? Uh, we have the operator here, what's the area of, of capacities? Happy to jump in.
Well, let me, let me try my best, and I'm not a, an attorney, but let me try my best to try to frame kind of the conversation. Um, I think for the capacity, I think the capacity is, it's a bigger project. You know, the one question I have for city manager is, is, you know, where the, the, the report or the term sheet has, I think fourteen staffers that are. Recommended, is that fourteen staff recommended on a hundred and eighty individuals?
Yeah.
So if we, so we, cause we keep talking about two hundred, but the official number is one eighty. Is that our initial capacity?
Yeah, so council, some of these questions, I think we might also have staff address, and as Alexis is coming up. Um, and, and again, you know, we could have the operator address it, but I think in some cases, staff may be a little bit more proficient in answering because. Remember, originally, we wanted, we thought we'd end up in a situation where we were just handing the keys over. And that's not where we're ending up. Where we're ending up is a situation where the city largely is responsible for the financial management. And they would be largely responsible for the management of the individuals, right? And so one of the things I want to make clear is, some of the questions and concerns I've heard you say, like in terms of cash flow and things like that. Remember, this is not a for-profit business. It's not like we're giving them a building and saying. Go, go make this building financially successful. Really, all that's happening here is the operator is taking the role of staff. Instead of us staffing it with our people, we're giving them money for them to staff it, right? So we're paying their bills. They're not, I mean, they'll do some fundraising, but they're not charging the homeless individuals a rental fee. And then they're gonna use that rental fee to cover their expenses. No, the city is hiring them to be our. The city is hiring them to be our operator, which is essentially replacing our staff. So we're not having to staff it. They're staffing it and we're paying their bills. So cash flow is not an issue for them unless it's an issue for us. And I can tell you right now, cash flow is not an issue for us. So to get to your specific question, Alexis, could you speak to the staffing and the number of beds and so on?
Yeah, so to the question of occupancy first, I know there had been different models over the last several years, right? Just from a concept now to where we are under construction. But it's my understanding that a local code is going to dictate that it's a hundred and eighty people. So that's max capacity in a year one. And then on staffing, all, as you can see in the operator budget workbook, as well as, I'm not called out necessarily in the term sheet specifically, but a lot of the research that staff and input from the Lighthouse or others conducted was based off of existing emergency shelter navigation centers. We use one out of Merced, one out of Bakersfield, and then another local newer shelter in Visalia. So it's kind of case studies, if you will, and bring that. So the, the staffing plan had ranged from anywhere from fourteen to twenty. And let me know if I'm misstating Mark or Mario or others, though this is, it's a, it's a tentative proposal, which means that with council direction or input from the Lighthouse, that staffing plan may change between, you know, let's say, consideration tonight and a formal agreement in the future.
Yeah, our, our current approach, working with the Lighthouse was, let's develop a staffing plan and model, not around the ultimate, you know, the facility ultimately could four hundred, can handle four hundred individuals. We weren't developing, developing a plan around that. We were developing a plan around what the capacity the building code limits us to right now is a hundred and eighty individuals. Now, over time, we can expand that to four hundred. But let's get the shelter open and run it for a year and see how we do. We weren't saying, for example, let's build out every level of service we could imagine, right? Of care for the individuals, let's basically operate a mi- a, a minimum level and see how we do for a year. And after that, reevaluate, right? So every year, at least for the first three years, we'll be reevaluating. How is it working? They'll be reevaluating. How are they doing, right? So what we're showing to you is the model that we think makes sense for, let's say, the next year or so.
If I can, and, and all respect of capacity. The staffing plan and I, I had asked this to staff as well and came back, in the position, there's fourteen positions. And was I understand that we would have three hundred and sixty-five, well, three hundred and sixty-five day, but twenty-four hour operations. That doesn't mean intake or program services twenty-four hours, but with that, of monitoring operations and doing that shifts, what of these positions, would it be shelter coordinator, shelter attendants, administrative support technicians? Can you perhaps explain what staffing positions and is there capacity in that that would cover twenty-four hours, seven days a week?
So at least under the, the staffing plan that was presented in the, in the very brief descriptions and what's not so much implied, but understood how the division from an executive director to middle management, to intake coordinators, to to other onsite staff, like logistics or programmatic. The, the staffing plan was more based off of a, a division of duties relative to the size of the general population. To my knowledge, at this point in the work sessions and planning, there hadn't been a discussion yet, which perhaps may happen in a policies and procedures stage, where you would talk about what the staffing looks like in the evening, at night, would programming look different on the weekends? And what if any impact would that have on staffing needs as presented?
Yeah, and I think, and the operators here is, and I think from the committee meeting, just want to walk through, that it's not, that's not a new question and it is to be worked out to say, hey, we need somebody monitoring the, the client twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So what I, with that, is that your, your facility maintenance technician wouldn't have that role. Your emergency shelter director would, wouldn't be able to do twenty-four, seven, so days a week, you know, seven days a week. So with that, as I understand, you have, there's a coordinator could cover certain shifts. Shelter attendants could cover certain shifts and I don't know administrative technicians. So if I have generally, if you will, four staff. I don't want to get super technical. I just want to make sure the capacity is understood by the operator. That's the goal, that we would have somebody there and our positions have somebody there that would be there twenty-four, seven in different capacities. That's what I want to look at. Generally, four staff can cover twenty shifts in a week. You have seven days, three shifts, that's generally twenty-one shifts in a basic similar, you know, basic model. We have four staff, we can cover twenty shifts. What I'm seeing is, I see six staff potentially that we're going to cover those shifts. And I just want to make sure that it, that what we have is, somebody will be there staffing it twenty-four, seven. Is that understood by both sides? And, and the operator is here, I think, can, can say that. I understand what you're saying, Alexis. We, we're taking a relative to duties. This is still to be worked out. So maybe I'm getting ahead of ourselves, but that three hundred and sixty-five days a year, eight to five certain operations, twenty-four, seven, are we on the same page that we'll have somebody there covering those shifts?
Ye- yes, but I would also say you're only looking at the staffing plan. If you look at the budget, you also have five thousand dollars a month for security operations, including guards, right? So there'll maybe some guards that are fill in shifts that are not full-time dedicated staff, they're contract staff. Security guards, like we have at the encampment. And in the evenings, we don't have a park ranger or code enforcement that go in there. In the evenings, we have a security guard sitting in the booth just monitoring the activities and behavior.
So, no, so I, I think in our operator agreement, and I would say with that, this kind of, well, I think that's an item, are, are we on that understanding? Are we as council okay with that?
Right.
I, I can only speak from Patrick and I want to say Alexis, correct, this wasn't fine tuned in the committee meetings and we understand. But I, I, my suggestions are that as we have those operations and perhaps we work that, I like that it is outside of a security guard or a police officer, there is a, a people person, I'll say that, there with the grip, especially the attendance we're looking at, maybe starting at fifty, one hundred, one hundred and fifty, that suggested that the operator agreement have that there needs to be that people person twenty-four, seven.
Exactly. That's the kind of feedback we're ultimately, at the end, I mean, whether you give it tonight or later, but that is the kind of stuff we're expecting. So if there was a majority of council that said, yes, we agree with all of that, then we would go back and bake that. If it isn't already covered, we'd work that out with them in the budget. Yeah.
Okay, so that's one area. And I also, council members, as I understand, as we're having this discussion, it doesn't mean that that question is absolutely answered tonight, because this is an operator agreement discussion. And we do have the operator here and so forth. So that would be one area of capacity that I've heard. The, the area of capacity you said regarding finances, the, the city manager addressed, so Councilman Segala, go back to you, if there was another concern you wanted us to walk through.
Well, I think, I think I'm, I'm still trying to grasp around this whole budget, this whole staffing. I mean, you know, a lot of these folks are eight to five type of positions. What happens, you know, after hours on the weekends? I mean, are we going to leave it up to security guards to kind of take care of that? You know, I would, I would feel more comfortable there was an actual staff person there, you know, that would be there, not a security guard. You know, and so that someone that can handle things that come up, obviously they're not going to provide that, that type of service. So my question is, what I'm hearing is there, there could be some adjustment to the staffing, but that's going to increase the cost.
No, not necessarily. If you tell us that's what you're looking for, you know, we have staff, for example, take police officers, right? We don't have officer, all the police officers don't work eight to five. They have three shifts, right? They may work eight hours each, but one comes in at midnight, one comes in. We might just sit down with the operator and say, okay, which of your staff people is going to come in on Friday night at midnight, is this? So what you just tell it, you've already told us, you have two council members that have said, we want to make sure if possible, there's always a staff member, they're not just a security guard. So we'll go back and see if we can play with those numbers. If there's a way to do it within the budget, we would. If we come back to you when we have the final, if you approve this tonight and we come back with the final operating agreement and we go, hey, we did everything we could, but it's going to cost an extra ten thousand dollars a year or whatever, we'll tell you that.
So just before I move on to at least the, the next question, on the staffing, can you so my understanding from the term sheet, our city staff is going to do a lot of the administrative, financial, accounting work.
That's correct.
And is that incorporated in the budget somewhere or we're just going to say, hey, Mario, now you gotta do this besides your job or hey, Alexis, now you gotta do this. I mean, what's the staffing plan on that side?
Yep, so I, I can't tell you ultimately if where we're at is going to be sufficient. I don't know. Again, this is a custom project. We're building it for the first time. It's the first homeless shelter this city is ever going to run. But you notice in our budget, we have four new positions that were requested. Some of the capacity, those existing positions are intended to apply towards this project. And then we have other staff that are an existing staff that are working on things. We will have a conversation internally, depending on what council does with this tonight, about readjusting some of their existing workload and priorities and responsibilities. So my current thinking is with the current budget, if you approve it tonight, I think we have the capacity there. We'll find out over time.
In terms of the executive director or the emergency services, emergency shelter director position, is there any consideration of that being a city staff person versus the operator? Was there any, has there any thought about that?
Could do that. All I would caution council on is um, part of the reason why originally we want the perfect scenario for us originally would have been, we just hand somebody the keys and we walk away. Part of the reason for that would be liability and, and responsibility, right? I mean, if we hand somebody else all the liability and all responsibility, that's great. We're not in that position. So we're still trying to figure out, okay, who does what best, right? We think we do the financial piece better. That there are our taxpayer funds, we have a fiduciary responsibility to them. We think we do a better job at managing our funds. That's why we're in that role. There, we think they do a better job of managing the homeless individuals, right? So we, we bifurcated those two things because we think that makes the most sense. Now, if all of a sudden we decide to put a city employee as the director, which we could do that if you would like, my concern about that is, is now that director is sort of dictating the operations of them in terms of how they manage the homeless individuals, which we don't have that expertise. And I, 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 I'm also concerned about not only now we're going to have somebody that's going to tell them what to do and we don't know what we, what to do. And we're assuming more liability for those decisions versus they have liability for their decisions, we have liability for our decisions.
Well, on, on that point, Mr. City Manager, there's a thing called the term sheet, right? That basically lays out that responsibility. So if you are concerned about our city staff running it as executive director, there's a thing called the term sheet where you can put in there, hey, the executive director is going to be general oversight, is going to have oversight of the city staff, assure the finances and receipts and all that stuff is going to be taken care of, will work with the operator and they're in charge. I mean, there's ways to write, I mean, I'm sure a, and a city attorney can put it in there.
I'm happy to do whatever council, I'm just telling you philosophically, the reason why we didn't structure that way. If council ultimately feels that it's better for a city staff to run and, and tell them what to do.
No, I'm not saying tell, I mean, I think there's, what I'm saying is there's a way to delineate that where you don't have to tell them what to do.
Explain to me the problem we're trying to solve.
If you, what I, what I think, I think what I'm trying to figure out is that the oversight of, of a city employee as a director of the shelter, I think for me, I would feel more comfortable working with the operator, because the city's taking on a lot of the fiduciary, regulatory, reporting type of things. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Right. So I think a, a city staff person, whoever that may be, could be a, someone that's here, you hire someone that can be in charge of that and then work closely with the operator and the operator has their terms, their contract says you're going to handle the intake, you're going to handle the relationships, you're going to be on the streets, you're going to feed people, you're going to clean up the dog cages, whatever's in the term sheet. And that's all I'm asking. Now, I'm not asking council to vote on it, but I, right now, but it's just a suggestion.
I, I think the part which I, I would say is, it's defining. Like you're saying, it's defining the definitions of where you're coming from that. So what you just described in the end, I would say is what we're doing now. We have a parks and rec director, we have a city manager and there's a point person towards the oversight. From my experience and dynamics of the hats that I wear outside of council, I completely endorse you want an operator on the ground doing it. And the part from that is a separation that allows the operator to see what they see on the ground. This is going to take flexibility. This is going to take some evolution. Having a bureaucrat, and bureaucrat can be a good word, but having a bureaucrat that is in between of who's that director going to come to, they're going to come to the parks and recreation, they're going to come to the city manager or they're going to come to council. We have a term sheet, let the contractor, in this case, what I see in front of us and I have endorsed is your, your people person, your operational director is your third party. Let that private enterprise group that knows that, let them handle that and let them come back to point people. So I, my suggestion to council, if I'm getting the definitions right, is keep it to the, to the third person and keep the roles that have been established, I think, at this stage. There's, there's always, I just want to say too, there's always a year, two years, three years, you can come back and take feedback and go, this isn't working or we need to make adjustments.
As I understand what Mr. Segala is talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a public works director. We have a community services director and we have several other directors. Sounds like what you're talking about is an emergency shelter director position that oversees what the Lighthouse does in their operation. Is that what you're talking about?
That, that would be part of the responsibility as well as, as working with, with our city staff. I mean, I'm not asking that they be elevated to the district director, but they can work under Mario, they can work under whoever the city manager decides that this is the, the department that, but the, that, that person talks to. But I think that's what I'm looking for, someone that would be the oversight overall. Not necessarily dictating, you know, I know, I understand where city manager is coming from, but the if we lay it out clearly in the term sheet and the contract, everybody has a role and responsibilities. And that's all I'm saying is I think that we should have a city staff person as the emergency shelter director that works with the operator to take care of things. And, you know, the idea is not to add bureaucracy, but, you know, that's.
But you just have and you've made your point. So bottom line is staff recommendation is something otherwise that bifurcates the two. You've indicated what it is. I take the mayor is, is in a position to follow staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Yes, and so am I. Councilmember Sarah is vice mayor? Okay, so we've, we've dealt with that issue. So, Mr. Mayor, why don't we move on?
Well, you know what, let's, let's vote on it. I mean, I think, you know, I, you know, the votes are here, the, the stuff is there. So, I mean, I, I wanted to bring up some issues and we'll just, we'll just move forward. So I, I'm done, Mr. Mayor, I'm done, Mr. Mayor, you can move on to the other councilman.
You, we just dealt with one issue. You, you talked about competency, talked about all these other things and and I, I asked you to ask the questions and bring it out. Now all of a sudden, it's almost like you're pouting because you don't want to ask any more questions. Please. No, 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 let's hear, we dealt with one issue, we dealt with one issue. Please, ask your other questions. Mr. Madero, other questions you have on the agreement?
No, well, there was, I want to hear Mr. Segala's question.
I'll circle back to Mr. Segala.
On, on the emergent, paragraph G, it talks about emergency shelter missions goals and and it lays all of those, well, those three out, mission statement, goals and objectives and the outcome. Several of those are going to be hard to achieve. And I know here it states third-party service provider will recognize and adhere to the council through mission statement. Thank you. The mission statement, my, my question is, if they don't adhere to that, do we have a violation of the agreement? And shouldn't that say they will make every reasonable attempt to adhere to, to those?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, these, these actually, I think, were voted on previously by council. The mission statement, the goals, objectives and outcomes, I think these were all previously voted on. I don't think what was voted on was the previous section G where it says, we'll recognize and adhere. But I think if you wanted to add language about striving or, or whatever the language you were using, certainly that would be consistent with the modifications you made to this other language that follows.
Yeah, I, I was thinking third-party service provider will make every reasonable attempt to ad- to recognize and adhere to the council approved, et cetera, et cetera. Also, it talked about dogs being limited to one individual per, per guest, one dog per guest. How, how will they handle situation to where if somebody doesn't, somebody wants two or three dogs and there's a couple of other guests that don't have any? Are you going to let them kind of, you adopt? Are you going to let them kind of, you adopt it, now handle it, that kind of thing?
Let's have Manny come and speak to it a bit. So, uh, one of the things I wanted to mention is Manny's department will have general oversight over this contract. So ultimately if a contract is entered into, his staff is the one who's going to make sure that they're performing under the terms of the contract. They'll be working very closely with them. Manny's staff also. If you approve the term sheet, Manny's staff starts taking over the process to work on the actual agreement because we want Manny's staff to have a separate set of eyes looking at potential cost savings and efficiencies, for example, with the encampment. After council approved the last issue with the camp, with the encampment, Manny's team has been able to find about $400,000 in cost savings. So that's one of the benefits of having different apartment, different sets of eyes. Manny, can you speak to what we're dealing with with the encampment in terms of the dogs and why we ended up with the one dog policy?
Well, actually, uh, I would like to thank PD with animal control. They've been going there every single day. Actually, people are being cited and giving them notice of violation. People being asked to leave the encampment if they don't follow. We have situations where we allow one person to come back signing a paper saying that zero dogs are going to be there. Next day we find 15 and send to tent. So why we found out this? Because we walk around, we check on, on tents from outside, not violating their space. We keep an eye. We have good contact with all the neighbors. They tell us if they have extra dogs and everything. So everything comes to the relationship you have with everybody in the encampment. They will let you know, they will report because they are tired of the flies, uh, having to pick up all over the, the encampment. And you guys seen the difference now in the past three months, we've been controlling the dogs. We've been controlling how many they have. Animal control has been visiting every single day and actually citing people. So that how we keep control is having boots in the ground and being involved with them like we're going to be with them. We will be there every single day assisting however we can and keep it under control.
What we're finding is when we started the encampment, we were allowing two dogs. And we found that two was too many frankly, and they're not managing the dogs. And I shouldn't say everyone, maybe some individuals are, but the preponderance of individuals are not managing properly. The other thought is if we allow them to have one animal, I know it's tough, right? It makes, that makes them make tough decisions. But if you have two animals, there's a good chance you're going to have more than one, especially if you have two of the opposite sex. Uh, but the other piece of that is, is if they want more animals, that gives them something to look forward to and work towards in terms of getting out of the shelter. You want to have two animals. If you want to have more, if you want to have more room to live, if you want more storage space, if you want more, work with us, let us help you get into permanent supportive housing out of the shelter.
Did that answer your question?
That answered my question. Thank you. I didn't have anything else other than what we're dealing with. But I look forward to hearing from other council members that concerns. If any.
So I think circling, one of, um, the items I had mentioned to staff, council, and appreciate the response is it to be worked through entry level, as it stated, um, in page four, participation levels, uh, free to go, free, the note says free to come and go as they please. And I presented the concern just to, okay, what, what does that mean exactly? And it comes to monitoring actions that take place at 2:00 AM or 4:00 AM with that. And so I appreciate staff had answered that question and said, of course, that operational point is, you know, will be reviewed with the operator. And let me get back to, uh, it's really for guests come to go and they please. It's not to be in contrast with other levels of participation, meaning the entry level of guests are expected to utilize relevant programming. So if I'm coming and I have a program to go to, I can go to that. It's not meant, and thank you for addressing my concern, that at 2:00 AM, people are just coming in and out of the facility with that. So thank you, because one, it addresses safety and security and it also addresses operational, I think supervision at that time. The, the other part, which is it mentions about voluntary roles. And of course, with this operator agreement is it allows that opportunity of working with the operator in residence of what are voluntary roles? What does that look like? What does that mean? Compared to if an operator agreement, I, this is the way I interpret it, were to say no voluntary roles. That's not the case. We're leaving the door open that, uh, clients and participants can volunteer in different capacities.
Before you go on from that, maybe Mario can answer that question. I, and I know it's indicated in here about the fact that they're not to do anything that would look like an employee for workman's comp and, um, salary position or that's tough to determine, isn't it? I mean, don't, don't we come very close to be in a situation to where that could potentially be a problem when duties are assigned voluntarily?
Yeah, when, when, when the city staff or the city as a whole, I guess, when we start directing specific things, the more that we get into the specifics, the more it's going to look like, the more it will be interpreted as an employee employer relationship as opposed to an independent contractor relationship. And so you always have to be careful with that.
And again, at the end of the day, we're talking about the operator that would be conducting those activities, not the city. Unless the city decides it wants to take over certain positions and then we dictate to them what they do.
But that's one of the reasons to bifurcate the responsibilities and the circumstances is, is an issue like that.
Yes.
And that's what I understood. There's roles. It's not volunteer necessarily for the city. It's the operator has the option to volunteer roles there. Okay. We talked about the animal control. I had asked about laundry and kind of the roles because we have that. We'll provide that the city will provide the, the items and the supplies necessary. And then the operator will facilitate the laundry onsite. Uh, we already talked about the accounting. The, a part of the goals that I, I wanted to be mindful, there are a list of goals. Councilman Maderos touched on these, but the other part, which was clarification, there's goals. And some of the goals we have in here, which maybe seem to the council very strong or others, but they're also meant for grant funding. We want those goals, part of the operations, part of the understanding, because it helps with external sources and, and other dynamics. The next, the next question that I have outside of the agreement, and this was, um, brought up, and I thought this was worthwhile to touch on public, was about the operator. And in with lighthouse, uh, was an understanding of their bylaws that that the capacity was three board members and wanted the question if, and if the operator can either respond now or respond later and operating. What, what does the bylaws of the operator have for board positions? And how many of those board positions are currently filled? And I think the, the good concern was just addressing was the demonstration of the stability of the operator. So if, if they, and I'll leave that to the, like I said, the operator, I'm not pulling you up for any up to ask that right now, but the question was our bylaw says we can have this many board members. I'm not aware of that. And currently we have this many board members. And, um, again, I, I think in a lot of questions in reviewing operators, it's a common question amongst other nonprofits and pose that. And, and if, if you would like to answer that now or, or later. Can you come up, Ray? Thank you.
Uh, we currently have four board members. Um, a couple of us have been on for quite a few years. There's a person showing some interest in joining. I, I think a good spot for our board would be about seven members.
What, what does your bylaws have for, does your, if your bylaws state with the number?
Um, so we are a faith-based organization. So, um, part of, uh, the board, recommend, uh, requirement would be, uh, that you have some association with a, uh, religious affiliation, so church activity.
Okay. So in, in summary, if it's fair, Ray, your, your group is hope to get to seven and you're currently at four.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we, we like to have at least one pastor on the board. And would like to have at least a accountant on the board.
Another with that, and thank you, and being here, it's probably, I think, to address for the public concern, was an operator that is faith-based. And as your testimony just said, you're a faith-based organization. And that split of, of faith-based and its engagement with our city homeless shelter. Now, what I've understood in being the committee that this was addressed, that the operations of this is operations of a facility. It's separate. It's a contracted agreement.
Correct.
Now, there's nothing, there's nothing preventing in our agreement that an organization could host a Bible study or others, but the faith-based dynamics are not brought into the operations. I don't see that here in the operator agreement and you being here that that's your organization's understanding.
Yeah. Uh, uh, as far as, um, our, uh, day-to-day operations, we don't require our guests to be involved in worship in any way, but we do encourage it.
All right. Now it's, those are the questions, um, that I had myself were presented to me by community members.
And just, just to clarify what, what you're talking about, your day-to-day relationship at the lighthouse where you're now serving over 80 individuals in your women's family and men's, uh, services. That's where you're, you're inviting people to volunteer, to participate in the, in the faith-based programs.
Yeah.
That's the lighthouse. That's not coming with you to the operation of the shelter.
Uh, no, that, not the volunteerism from the community. But I would hope, uh, you know, currently the way our staffing at the lighthouse works, speaking to, uh, uh, council member Sangala, um, asking about capacity, you know, we do have 24-hour, people on, on duty. But it is, they are people that, uh, have been associated with the lighthouse coming through our program. You know, as we learn to trust them and they show trustworthiness, we put them in that position.
Right. Thank, thank you. I, I don't have any other questions, but I'll continue around if. Vice Mayor Harold, Councilman Sangala? Councilman Maderos? Okay. Thank you. There's.
Okay.
No other question. All right. With no other questions or comments? Does, does the council have desire for an action?
So I would like to make a motion after reviewing and, and now approving the term sheet and accompanying preliminary operating budget precedent to entering into a final and comprehensive service agreement with Lighthouse Rescue Mission regarding the city's emergency shelter project.
We have a motion? I'll second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
Okay. Motion carries for one. Thank you, uh, Ray, Karen, Renee. Thank you for being here and to staff as well. Um, I'm going to continue on general business 9.2. Tulare Avenue and Oakmore Street intersection deferred improvement agreement? Mr. Gaffrey?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in your packet was, um, the staff report, and this was just a repeat of the staff report slightly from, um, the last meeting when we continued this item and staff received some, um, direction to proceed with some revisions to, um, the agreement. And so with that, we were able to get those done, um, in a tight timeframe. And so we still need to review the final, um, version from the city attorney with the developer. Um, but at this point, consistent with, um, that direction that was given and, um, Mario Zamora, um, Mark, myself and Councilmember Maderos have been reviewing on that document. Um, and I also have the developer here to answer any questions.
If I, if I may.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
The last time this came, it was two weeks ago and, uh, the concern at that point was that the documents that had been drafted did, did not encompass the representation that the, uh, that Mr. Nunley had indicated. He had indicated previously that he was prepared to put a particular piece of property up as collateral for the improvements that the developer was going to make in conjunction with Mr. Bonadelli. Uh, and the concern was that the documentations before us didn't encompass any of that. And, um, when we met, we continued it to this meeting and the next day, Mr. Bon, Mr. Nunley reached out to me and he and I, uh, discussed this and, and, uh, figured out the best way to approach it. And the way we came up with it was subsequently discussed with the city manager, Mr. Gaffrey and Mr. Zamora, was that, uh, we would prepare the documentation that we have now, which would included the deferred improvement agreement. Also, uh, a, a personal guarantee that he agreed to, uh, over and above, uh, any, it would serve to guarantee any deficiency as far as improvements up to a limit of $500,000. And you'll see in the documentation that we now have that that document has been prepared. There is a security agreement that, that based on my review this morning needs to be significantly modified. Primarily as to the party that, that would, Mr. Nunley doesn't own this property. He's a LLC member of the owner of the property. So that kind of technical thing has to be changed, uh, in that document. And then all of these documents are encompassed. When I say encompassed, I'm talking about the deferred, uh, improvement agreement, the personal guarantee are then mentioned in the short form deed of trust that will be recorded in a escrow that has been opened with First American title to, uh, uh, escrow number 7282335. Teresa Alves is the escrow officer and the preliminary report has been ordered. There will be a first deed of trust in place. Mr. Nunley has indicated that we, uh, and we have, we have indicated and he's agreed in my discussions with him that we will get an Estoppel certificate, certificate which confirms the amount of the first. The assessed value on this particular piece of property that, uh, is being pledged through that escrow has been assessed by the county of Tulare at, um, one and a half million dollars. The indication is that the first deed of trust is just over $400,000. So, um, the representation based on the information we have is that we have approximately a million dollars of equity to serve as collateral. And we also have, uh, 500,000 personal guarantee that has been indicated. And the only person I haven't talked to in this is, uh, Michael Miller. And Michael, you're, the parameters of the developer's obligations, you were involved in that first discussion we had on Thursday morning, uh, after our last Tuesday meeting. And, uh, this is in line with what we discussed. Is that correct, Michael?
Yes, that's correct.
And then after that Thursday meeting, I then had further discussions with Mr. Nunley and, and Mr. Zamora's office last week was, uh, striving to get these documents done. What'd we spend, Mr. Nunley? About an hour texting each other Friday night somewhere in that vicinity and uh, came to the conclusion that hopefully all of this would, would be done today. So the hope is that, uh, subject, these documents, subject to legal review would be approved. And that escrow would be closed as quickly as we, we get these documents finalized so that the Bonadelli agreement can go, a construction agreement can go forward. And, uh, there was language that Mr. Bonadelli asked for, which will be incorporated in this, which is that, uh, the developer and Mr. Miller, have you seen, heard this or are you aware? Okay, I'd like, I, I want to run this by you, that, uh, the developer of the residential phase two, which is the Mr. Bonadelli, shall not have a hold on building permits or certificate of occupancy issued for the 85 lots if the developer has posted improvement bonds and if state route 137 frontage improvements are delayed due to Caltrans failure to issue an encroachment permit or conduct additional plan reviews in a timely manner. Mario, did you, did you hear that or did Mario interrupt you?
He, he read it.
Oh, okay.
So before Michael answers that, just really quick, I want to make sure I, I lay out what I understand. And Michael, you'll correct me if you understand differently. But what I understand we're doing is we're removing that phase of the project, Mr. Bonadelli. We're removing him from the security of the improvements. And we're placing that security on Mr. Nunley's entity. And that's what's being secured, the collateral that's being pledged is Mr. Nunley's entity. Now, at the end of the day, we don't know from Caltrans.
Mr. Nunley's property that's owned by.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you. What we don't know is what is Caltrans ultimately going to require and what the cost and value of those improvements are. If they're more than one point five million dollars, then we may be in a difficult position. If they're less than one point five million dollars, we're not arguably in a difficult position. Have I said anything that you disagree with so far?
No.
Okay. Have I said anything that you don't, that you don't agree with in terms of what I've said so far?
No, I guess I would just like clarification that the improvements, are we talking about just the intersection improvements? Or are we also including the standard frontage improvements along State Route ninety-nine? Because the language isn't very.
Good point.
Specify that very well.
Yeah, that's a great point, and I would agree with that.
You said ninety-nine, but you meant one thirty-seven.
I'm sorry, yes, that's correct.
Yes, this wouldn't exempt them from having to meet their standard obligation of frontage improvements.
Correct, that's, that's what I would be more comfortable with.
Adding that language. And I, and the only other piece I would have is he uses the terms, Mr. Bonadelli used the term bonds. I think that's not exactly the term we're using here. I would maybe change it to security.
So different from a, the performance bond being the security.
Well, he's not putting, well, he.
This, what this is doing is repl- instead of having a performance bond that you have to sue on and you have to go through all of that, we're taking, we're collateralizing this particular piece of property in its place. Plus, we have the five hundred thousand dollar personal guarantee of Mr. Nunley.
Both make up the security.
But, but to explain an estoppel certificate is that the holder of the first is going to represent how much is owed. And let's say uh the holder of the first, the note and deed of trust on this piece of property comes back and says there's four hundred thousand dollars owed. And then litigation comes later and there's a problem. And they say, oh, I made a mistake. It's actually eight hundred thousand dollars. Well, they're stopped from saying, they're stopped from saying it's eight hundred thousand because they represented to begin, in the beginning, that it was four hundred thousand dollars. So, so they're locked in at that point. Is that a fair assessment, Mr. Zamora? Okay. And that's all going to be handled in escrow.
So, and I, I don't know if I missed something. I, I appreciate you walking through it. There's a lot of verbal details here. I, I don't have a document in front of me.
I'm so sorry, we have the documents.
Am I the only one that didn't get one?
No, you, I, I didn't hand out the documents because I wanted to have this discussion first and, and get some direction because we've, yeah, I mean, this is about twenty-five pages of materials that you haven't seen, so we wanted to brief you on that first.
I did see him this morning because I've been actively involved in this since the last meeting and uh have made the correction, uh indicated to Mr. Zamora some of the corrections.
Yeah, I, I get it. I think I like to write like as it's going on in the sections that you reference. And this one had said the documents should be handed out at council. We touched on it. I'm just like, did I miss something? Because I, you're, you're going through different pieces and it's just nice to write notes on it.
When I did that, I assumed that Mr. Gaff.
Sorry, sorry.
Why don't you hand them out now so we can, if, if there's questions?
I, I get what you're saying, Thomas, but a lot of times as going through points, it's nice to have those in front instead of just having to listen.
I, I, I asked him not to hand them out because I didn't want you to get belabored in the document before we had a chance to talk about them.
Have you heard how we talk about things? We like to get belabored. Uh, Mr. Madero says you have the floor on this. Is there any other?
Well, now that you have the documents, the, the relevant document to begin with, correct me if I'm wrong, Mario, but the first one to concentrate on is the deferred improvement agreement. Because that's the substance of what we're dealing with. And the other documents are just a, a follow-through on base, what that basically indicates. The next one is the personal guarantee that Mr. Nunley had indicated that, that he has. And this covers any deficiency, not covered by the deferred improvement agreement. Uh, many times when it, when there's a foreclosure, uh whether it's a per- uh performance uh deed of trust or your normal deed of trust, if there's a deficiency, then you're prevented from going after anything else. That's waived under this agreement. And that's why the personal guarantee is, is uh additional security that Mr. Nunley has given. Then the uh security agreement uh is, is kind of ancillary to the deferred uh improvement agreement. It accompanies it. And then the, the deed of trust is what will go to, to the title company for recording after we get the preliminary title report. And we expect that uh hopefully to, to go before, today's what, the seventeen? We, we want to see a recording before July first. And I think the last communication I had with Mr. Nunley was that he did, he, uh, with everything he has going in this project and Mr. Bonadelli, that uh he, he, if, if we could get this done within twelve to fourteen days, that, that was what he had indicated, we should be fine.
And, and the council, the only other thing that I would add, the, the document that was on top, the one that says the deferred improvement agreement. So that was the document that was in your packet last time. And um you see in the track changes on pages four and five, that adds the references to these other two documents. Um, and other than that, that's in the form that you saw last time.
And some of the cleanup, uh, for instance, I think it was the personal, no, it was the security agreement talked about. Then, and I, in, it's not unusual to have a situation like this where you're drawing on past, when you're drawing and you, you reference past documents that you prepared. Uh, for instance, it discusses uh an appraisal will be given. Well, it's understood in the discussions that we had that Mr. Nunley is not going to go out and get an appraisal on this particular pop, property. We're relying on the assessment by the county of Tellary. And also, he has, uh, based on values today, he has indicated that uh in his opinion, there's a, a million dollars worth of, of equity in this particular property, which if the, if the estoppel certificate comes back like we think it is and we have the assessment of the county of Tellary, that representation's going to be accurate. Uh, we don't know in the future, and I, I want to state that, we don't know in the future what land values are going to do. That could be worth more, it could be worth less, it depends upon factors way beyond what any of us could control. But those are the kind of modifications that are, we're going to work through, the legal review that's going to take place afterwards. And uh, um, by and large, what the, the, what we'll be doing today is moving to go forward with these agreements along the line of the agreement that, along the lines of the understanding that we have uh subject to a, a call by any of the council members to have a special meeting to finalize uh this if there's any concerns.
What, what I'd like to do if counsel, Mr. Maderos walking through this before any other Q and A is uh to get a kind of a three hundred and sixty-degree uh input on this is to invite uh Quest Equity or Mr. Nunley or in the reps, if you have any comments or if you'd like to discuss this at all. Just, I want to give you the floor. If there's anything you a- agree, rebuttal, thoughts?
I'm going to state my name, Dennis. Reg Nunley, twenty-five ninety Diamante. Last time you weren't going to state my name. Let me, let me start out by this, guys. This should be a lot easier than what we got the eleventh hour today at eleven o'clock from the city attorney. Michael, I want you to clarify, before Fulton Estates was approved, what level of service was this intersection qualified as? It was a filling intersection. It was probably the worst classification of a, of a, of a level of service, right?
Yeah, I believe eight, it was PMP tower, I think was the level of servicey.
But it was a filling intersection.
It was failing intersection.
So, you know, I'm standing up here, we, we bring our project up here and I'm willing to front the money due to this project. And you guys are going to pay me back my fair share. Now, you guys could talk about a million-dollar equity in land and a five hundred thousand dollar guarantee for me. And at the end of the day, you guys are going to pay me back whatever the expense of that is above my fair share. I mean, let, let's, let's take this for example, guys. What did Woodside do on their roundabout? That roundabout was one point eight million dollars, am I right? Two million dollars, right? They have twice as many houses as us. How much money did they give you? Was it two hundred thousand dollars? How much was it?
I'll have to defer to the city engineer.
How much did Woodside pay for that roundabout for their fair share?
I don't think we have a final number yet. It was one point two five million of Caltrans dollars, three hundred and fifty-five thousand.
So Woodside didn't pay anything for it?
They'll probably be out some money, but not, certainly not the bulk of it.
Excuse me?
Say they'll be out some money, but not the bulk of it. The bulk of it's coming through.
Take a guess, Michael, if you can. How much do you think they're going to be out?
Maybe three hundred thousand.
How much?
Maybe three hundred thousand.
Okay, so we're pretty close on our numbers from what I've talked to Matt Smith. So, and they didn't front the money to do the intersection, they didn't do this agreement that I'm being requested to do and I'm agreeing to do. And the city attorney is overreached with the security agreement. I'm okay with bonding with, with you guys taking a performance deed of trust on my property and a personal guarantee for me, which I've never done in my life, for five hundred thousand dollars to pay for this. Even if you guys foreclosed on my property and took my half million dollars from me, when you guys are done with your project, you're going to pay me my money back above my fair share. That's the way the law works. So just because you guys have this, doesn't mean that, that you guys are going to get all these improvements for free. So I'm up here standing saying I'm willing to do this. I don't appreciate getting an agreement after two weeks at the eleventh and a half hour. I'm very frustrated for sitting here a couple hours this week and last meeting. And I need a decision tonight. I need a vote on whether this is going to happen or not.
Well, I think you, we've indicated we're, we're going to give you that vote. I think we've got this agreement in line with what has been discussed. You indicated this, this allows Mr. Bon, Bonadelli to go forward, which.
I, I understand.
When we first started this, you represented that you were willing to do this to allow him to go forward. I think that was.
Completely understand, Dennis, and like I talked to you today, that agreement was way off-base. It's calling out for me to do an appraisal and to guarantee the million-dollar equity in the land. I don't know where all this came from. What I'm, what I'm up here standing in, that, that agreement specifically says that I'm going to hire to do an appraisal. I'm going to provide the city an appraisal.
That was a draft and I discussed with you.
I, I understand that.
Mistaken language that was put in there. We'd modify that and I've, I've already addressed that.
I understand. We should have had this agreement a long time ago. Listen, I'll get past that. What I'm saying is I'm standing up here, willing to do what I'm being asked to do. And whatever we vote in tonight, you know what? I'm going to live with it. I have no more, I have no more patience for it. If, if the city wants to do this themselves, let the city do it themselves.
I want documentation. It's my position. I want documentation that fulfills the discussions and agreements that Mr. Nunley and I had. There's aspects of this that don't do that. For instance, the request for an appraisal, that's not in there. But the million-dollar figure, that is consistent with our discussion. And I'm not saying your, your representation is there's a million dollars of equity in there. That doesn't mean that uh if it falls below that, you're in default. But when you give a guarantee and when you have the security agreement and the deed of trust, there's certain rep, if, when you do that, there's certain language that's going to be in there anytime you have that situation. We've got to get there and we're very close. And my request, counsel, is to approve the format that we have and go to final on these documents. And that's consistent with what you and I have been discussing now for the last two weeks.
Well, this is what I will say, is this would get done in a matter of, as soon as we do the ISO study and deal with Caltrans and schedule it, and you guys buy him in a domain if the people don't want to sell across the street. So this could be, this is going to be a process. But and if we vote for this, if you guys vote for this, and this gets approved with me, you know, uh, doing what I say I'm going to do and, and giving you guys this deed of trust and this personal guarantee, you're going to get full improvements on Tellary Avenue. I'm probably going to do the corner of my commercial corner and Oakmore. If this doesn't happen, that's going to sit there for a long time the way it is right now. So nothing's going to happen to that corner. Because if Bonadelli leaves, he's, who else is going to develop it? So that's the options that we have here. Now, I'm, I'm being really frank. I mean, that's like, this, this is, this is pretty easy to me. You got someone up here doing a personal guarantee and, and, and putting a piece of property up for something that's not even really a responsibility? That the city should have done this way ahead of time because it's a filling intersection, way below a level of service, and it's been like that for a long time? And I'm still up here willing to do this. So you, you guys make your decision, but I'm, I'm done talking about it. If you guys have more questions, I'll, I'm going to sit at the back, but I'm finished. You guys let me know what you guys want to do.
We'll stay, stay and you'll observe, I believe, that we'll follow through on the agreement that you and I have been talking.
What's that?
I said, if you stay and you'll see that we follow through on the agreement that we've discussed. And then we'll, we'll proceed with Teresa to get escrow, these documents finalized and to get escrow closed so that we have this completed.
You guys could vote on, I mean, this is what we talked about. I thought you guys were going to vote on the basics of this and then with, with, with an attorney review, we don't have to come back and do this again.
No, hopefully that'll be the case.
Okay.
But there may be council members that say we need to, once it's final, we need to finalize this at a special meeting we have prior to closing escrow. If that's the case, uh, that still should not be an impediment from you to go forward. Or I, I don't think you're going to hear any one of our council members say they don't want to do this.
Well, I understand, but I'm just one, I just want all these council members to look at the agreement they were given today like I was at eleven or twelve o'clock, whenever it was, and seeing all these things that, that, that I'm going to give appraisals and everything else. And I don't want any of these council members to expect that.
I, I've said probably three times already that the appraisal was inadvertently put in there and we're taking it out.
But I'm, Dennis, I'm only saying one example. There's many examples. You guys, you've seen my red lines. There's many examples that need to be stricken out of that security guarantee that I will not agree to.
We have time to discuss that.
So, we can discuss. We, we have that and I want to open uh to go to my vice mayor, uh, Mr. Harold, if you have any questions or comments? With that, I'll circle back.
No question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, the rea- the reason why I did that was just, I think, your presentation and Quest's presentation and comments, it, it's kind of live in the mind. So I just wanted to give counsel that chance as well as you discussed, if there was other items while it's live in, in your mind. Mr. Sangala?
Well, I, you know, I've been trying to track uh this item. I know, I've talked to Mr. Nunley in the past about this. And, you know, we had the, the developer come and talk about it and um, you know, just unfortunate that, you know, we just got this twenty minutes ago. It's a lot of stuff to read through and discuss. I mean, I, I think my concerns are that, you know, as Mr. Nunley mentioned, that he has some concerns uh that uh I'm not sure how, who he's brought up to or how they've been addressed or if they've been addressed. And just want to make sure that there's that comfortableness on his behalf of uh doing this. I mean, in terms of the actual idea of putting together this uh, this agreement, I definitely support it. But that's my only concern is, you know, not having any red lines or, you know, there's a lot of legalese, a lot of details. Um, you know, I think for me, you know, I just want to make sure that whatever other issues are brought up or addressed tonight before we vote. But I don't know what those are.
Councilmember Sarah, do you have any in the moment questions? Anything else to note before we go to public comment, Dennis? Okay, so with that, item nine point two, I'll open up for public comment. Is there anyone in chambers who wishes to speak on this? Okay, so with that, item nine point two, I'll open up for public comment. Is there anyone in chambers who wishes to speak on this item? Not at the moment, I think with that. Yeah, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone on the phone? Okay, that was public comment at the moment. So as I understand, and I think what's the suggested action here, Mr. Maderos and what I understand between staff, uh, city attorney, Quest, is that there's still edits to be in here. Mr. Maderos outlined what those edits would be. Um, the clarification and is the requested direction that to take those edits, we want a final document. Basically asking of us, which is per these edits, we're going to give that direction to the city attorney. And to work this out between Quest, the final document to be reviewed and a, and a per city attorneys.
The request is that you approve the agreement tonight, subject to final legal review.
Final legal review. And what I understand, though mentioned that the final legal review is still going to have some of these edits that Mr. Maderos mentioned.
Yes, there'll be active conversations between our attorney, their attorney, the developer, Mr. Maderos, Thomas and myself will have an active dialogue about any of these outstanding issues. If we cumitively agree that the changes are substantive and, and different than what you've approved this evening, I'm not talking about minor little things. Something that's more significant that might require us to bring it back to you. I'll remind you that Melissa, if she hasn't already reached out to you, she's going to reach out to you first thing tomorrow morning to try to schedule a special city council meeting for next week anyways. Because we have to have a special meeting to deal with the SB one issue, right? So we'll have that sometime next week. If we can't get this deal done because something has changed that substantive or Mr. Nunley says, I want to get back in front of council and have this discussion. We have that special meeting to be able to do that, which occurs before the July first deadline. But we may not. If you approve it, find it, subject to final legal review and all the parties looking and we go, there's no substantive changes. There are some changes, but we're good. It's, it passes legal muster, then it's approved without coming back to council.
And just so council knows, when it, when we're talking about legal review, if council permits me on behalf of council, I will participate in that.
Thoughts from council members? I would, um, I endorse that as the summary that the city manager gave. I think we have the record for which was presented by Mr. Maderos. And I'm fine too, is that outside of what Mr. Maderos presented, the testimony from Quest of what was agreed upon and final legal review, there's some working that out. That if one part or the other doesn't want to sign that, then of course it's going to be back in front of us. And you said minor conforming, you know.
Yeah, and I, and I also want to be clear that it would include the language that we discussed, Mr. Bonadelli had asked for, but the modification from bond to security. And it would include the addition of Michael Miller's comment about they still are obligated to do their frontage improvements. This doesn't waive that requirement.
Understood.
And Mayor, when you're ready, I'm happy to restate that for the record.
Sure.
Um, so, so.
If I could, those changes that were just mentioned, Mario, you're, you're making note of that for the purposes of us seeing it in these clarifying documents that are going to be prepared.
Correct. Um, so what I'm hearing is a motion to approve the agreement with amendments based on the discussions today, including the Bonadelli item, the frontage item, council member Maderos parking, participating with us. And any other non-substantive modifications necessary with direction to the city attorney that his approval is to form constitutes confirmation that this agreement is consistent with today's direction and then authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
And, and we follow through with the escrow at First American Title under the, under the, uh, escrow number seven two eight two three three five, including the, the stopple certificate that's mentioned. And also in conformance with the agreements that have been put together.
Got it.
That, and there is a policy of title insurance that's going to be issued in that escrow in the amount of the guarantee, five hundred thousand dollars.
Right? Anything else to add, Mark?
No.
Council members, do you want to provide direction for the comments?
My participation to the extent that I've had, I'd be more comfortable if one of the other council members made the motion and there was a second.
So I concur with everything Thomas said and I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to consider the deferred improvement agreement with the developer, the Fulton Estates, as described with the direction provided by council here at the meeting. Um, any further comments or questions? Council, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries by all. With that, we'll move on to item, back to item eight for our public hearing. And eight point one, uh, parking and business improvement area report and annual aerial, sorry. Parking and business improvement area report and annual assessments recommended action. Conduct a public hearing and recommendations of the Tulare Downtown Association Board of Directors and levy assessments for the Tulare Downtown Parking and Business Improvement Area Annual Assessment for Fiscal Year 2026. Mr. Roberts.
Uh, we don't have a presentation prepared. I'm just, I'm happy to answer and any questions council might have. This is obviously an annual item that's brought forward. Uh, following the approval of the, of the report and a resolution to levy an annual assessment and to hold a hearing, uh, for the same.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers who wishes to speak on this item? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone on the phone? Okay, I'll leave a moment in case anybody else possibly wants to present on the public hearing, hearing none. I will close the public hearing. And any other summary to provide question or comments from council members?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, Mark, is there any CPI formula based on, on these assessments? Uh, we had the same assessment for years or is there any index that's? Uh, because I think from my understanding, the assessment deals with, uh, some of the downtown activities that include clean and other types of things and I'm sure the minimum wage has gone up over the last five, ten years. So is there any CPI index that's part of this process?
No, not, not in, not in the current ordinance.
But does law allow for that to be part of the ordinance?
Isn't it us?
He would allow for it if, if when it was adopted, it was incorporated. I don't know if at the time the law allowed for it. But like, for example, were we doing the taxing, the special taxing district downtown? If you were to have ultimately approved that and the business owners or property owners downtown approved it, it could include a CPI, but we, we don't have that now. We would, we have to go back through the process to do that.
Okay, so, so now, I mean, so this particular one is locked in.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I, I guess along those lines, we, we have that frontage, is it's, it's twice the business license, right? The fee for the assessment. Uh, the point being is, I, I understood maybe with it is actually the assessment is approved by council. Or has in the past.
Yes, yes, council does approve it, yes.
So without the index though, I, I think council could entertain and change what those values are or how we would want to do. Okay.
I'm going to interject right there. So, um, at the last council meeting, we provided a consent item, um, approving this to be on, um, for a public hearing. And it provided the assessments for that. So in zone A, um, it's a hundred and seventy-five percent of the business license fee. And in zone B, it's eighty-five, eighty-seven point five percent of the business license fee.
But, and thank you. And going back, and I think to the question is, though it was a, it was a consent item that we agreed upon, council could change those percentages. It's in council's authority to do that. We make the decision on it compared to an, an index or automatic or, or assessment. Is that true?
If it's, um, stated in the municipal code, you'd have to adopt an ordinance, um, but I believe that they would have to vote. I don't, I, I honestly, I don't have that information.
I'm sorry, the reason why is there was, there was, how did we get to the hundred and eighty-five percent? I think council approved that.
I think the answer is yes, but I, we, I don't, unfortunately, I'm not prepared to answer the question of, do you have that ability to do that tonight? Um, I, I, and I would also say to you, unfortunately, this is really an item, even though we're presenting it, it's really the TDA. That sort of drives this. So without them recommending or being present, I would not recommend we take that type of step. I mean, there's other staff that might know the best answer.
No, I, yeah, just to be clear, I didn't understood that we would continue that step tonight. I think what Mr. Segala asked and, and I concur was, hey, is there an index or how do you get to that one hundred and eighty-five percent? And I, I think what I understood was council actually can make that decision. I mean.
Unless it's specified in the ordinance.
Unless specified in the ordinance.
Yes, pa, past practice and the municipal code actually requires the advisory board of the P bid area to prepare the report for each fiscal year for which the assessments are based on. So, um, you would, you would basically be going contrary to the recommendations of that report if you didn't follow what was therein.
No, thank you. So they do the report.
Yes.
Based off that and then that reports provided. So that's how we got to the hundred and eighty-five percent. Whatever that ever was.
Yes, they, yes, they submitted it in the report on June third.
Right, but, but that report, in that report, there's a graph that shows a shortage of funds.
Yes.
Isn't there?
Yes.
And so would it be? So, uh, uh, so in other words, there's a shortage of funds.
It's not based off the rate.
That doesn't open the door for us to consider an increase to backfill those funds?
Well, you go.
Sorry, the sidebar is, I think with that is the shortage of funds is based off the collections, not the rate itself.
Correct.
So they followed the process. And I think we've had continued discussion and I think council, like, to keep that conversation alive in time is how do we work through enforcement of payment? Which is a different issue than we have in front of us tonight, but that's out there.
Well, I, I think it would be related and I'm not sure if we could, in this action, direct staff to come up for a plan for next year. I mean, this is my eighth year and I've been talking, we've been talking about this for eight years. About how do we, uh, you know, we've had some staff who doesn't, said it wasn't their job to do it and we've had other staff that understands the issue. But I think I'd be more comfortable if, uh, we gave staff a whole year to figure it out, come back next year and say, hey, this is how we plan to collect the money.
I, I think we can be polite in, in mentioning that and I, I would endorse that of other councils as keeping this in front of us and looking through the enforcement process. I've seen some different examples in Mariposa, uh, Mariposa County, City of Isalia and some others. And what does that look like? Um, I think the action or the caveat, yes, that we have the action in front of us. And I would endorse and say, hey, throughout this next year, can we keep this topic alive of what it takes to have better enforcement? And then there's other comments from council members or Thomas if.
Mayor, I can answer the other question, which the assessments are in the ordinance. The amounts and the percentages are called out in the ordinance. Um, and some of the actions relative to the collections are already in effect. You saw that in the economic development report as we've been getting business licenses. Um, more and more in compliance, but we can come back later with something specific relative to this downtown parking assessment.
Okay. There's only two of us saying that, but I, I think if you're offering that, that's a consensus.
It's parking. It's the thing I like to do, so.
It's. All right. Any other comments or questions? There we go. Did you hear that wind, Segala?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, uh, council members, um, I'll look for action. We didn't have a motion in a second yet. There's action from council on eight point one. I'll make the motion that we, um, sorry, I was looking at this public hearing, but I'll make the motion to approve eight point one, the parking and business improvement area report and annual assessment as submitted.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. I did, I did do that. Um, can council all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight point one is approved. Um, if I can real quick, as we go to eight point two, can I ask for a two minute break real quick? It's important and facilitate. I just need to get up and use the facilities and I'll be right back. So if we have a two minute recess.
Well, and his point was a good one at the end, which is the big, in the big context.
I guess so.
I think he thinks that we think we're going to collect them one point five million dollars from, from him.
All right, my call back to order, uh, end of our recess. And we're gonna go to eight point two, adoption of the city of Tulare fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. And with that, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Mondell, or other staff who is presenting?
Pull up the sta- uh, presentation here just really quick, we're pleased to be here this evening. We've had a number of budget work sessions, tonight's intention is for you to hopefully adopt the fiscal year twenty-six budget. We're gonna turn it over to Mark and Jacob, they're gonna walk you through their PowerPoint, which hopefully will summarize for you pretty quickly your agenda packet. And we'll get to sort of the questions that we have for you and decisions for you to make, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mondell, and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. As Mr. Mondell said, it is a pleasure for our Budget Manager, Jacob Del Sid, and I to present the, uh, the proposed budget to you this evening. As usual, I'd like to thank, uh, Jacob for all his work, uh, in preparing the information before you tonight. Projected fiscal year twenty twenty-six revenues total one hundred and ninety point seven million dollars. Proposed expenditures are one hundred and seventy-nine point nine million dollars. For the general fund, as presented, proposed fiscal year general fund revenues and transfers in equal expenditures and transfers out with each totaling seventy-three point three million dollars. Compared to the current year for funds reported within the general fund, this is a one point four million dollar improvement. Operating and capital transfers out have been separated to illustrate the amount designated for capital projects.
During the June third meeting or third budget workshop, staff stated that the preliminary general fund budget reflected an operating surplus of roughly around three hundred and fifty dollars. If council recalls, this estimate was based upon removal of three point one million dollars in CIP transfers according, corresponding to the initial list of prioritized projects that we presented to the council. However, the total transfers amount included annual CIP-related transfers, which were not excluded in the previous calculation. If those transfers totally totaling approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars had been removed, the resulting surplus would have been closer to one million. With additional refinements by staff to various accounts, the operating surplus increased slightly to one point one, which allows for the incorporation of several of the projects prioritized by council into the budget, which you'll see on the next slide. Following that, you'll see the remaining fiscal year twenty-six projects for which staff is recommending the use of unassigned fund balance to provide full funding.
And the one point one million dollars, uh, noted for capital transfers out is effectively the operating surplus that we're, uh, discussing. These are the projects funded by the general fund capital transfers just referenced. These projects and those presented for separate adoption using general fund unassigned fund balance, which appear on the next slide, are proposed on the basis of council's direction during the June third budget workshop. And this is the project spending proposed for adoption using general fund unassigned fund balance. In case anyone's curious how number three ended up at the, uh, on the second list. Uh, in the end, it isn't relevant if council approves both elements of the budget, but the women's clubhouse and land acquisition project was not included due, due to its overall cost, uh, on the first list of projects, simply to allow for more projects to be included with what we'll call the primary budget, the first budget, uh, where you saw the, the operating and capital, that one that's balanced to zero.
And that nine hundred and fifty thousand is, even though it says renovation land acquisition, we understand from council that is only earmarked towards acquisition of the land for the clubhouse and the skate park. And keep in mind, any and all of these projects, even though you might approve them as part of the budget, will still come back to you for final approval at a later date.
Significant changes from the proposed budget and preliminary three are as follows. We've increased expenditures for venue operations by about one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. This accounts for annual splash pad maintenance, playground maintenance, like replacement parts, annual couch transit encroachment permits, annual rice eating, irrigation maintenance, turf mowing, edging, blowing. We've also included the council requests from our last budget workshop, which include a fifty thousand dollar increase to community arts. There was no appropriation for that in the preliminary budget, so we've added that in the proposed budget. We've also added twelve point five thousand dollars in council member community improvements, uh, for all council members, two point five each increase, which, uh, equates to twelve point five thousand, and we've also increased the Tulare Historical Society, uh, contribution by twelve point five thousand dollars to totaling it to twenty-five thousand dollars as a total. One thing I also like to touch on here.
Jacob, just to clarify, I think last year was thirteen thousand two fifty for the historical museum.
Correct.
And if you had twelve thousand five hundred, you're, you're at twenty-six thousand somewhat.
It's at twenty-five.
But you're going twelve, uh, twenty-five.
Twenty-five is the total amount, yeah.
Yeah.
One other thing I'd like to touch on here, um, it was mentioned at the, at the pre- previous budget workshop, the baseball utilities and the softball utilities. Those, those amounts have been included in the preliminary budgets, all the preliminary budgets you've seen up until this point, and they're still included in the proposed budget currently. They both total thirty-one and a half thousand dollars, fifteen thousand seven hundred fifty each for both baseball and softball. So both of them combined for thirty-one thousand five hundred, they are included in the proposed budget. This slide just reflects the updated council member appropriations, as you know, they were previously five thousand dollars for travel and event expenses. And now the, the community improvements per council member district has been also, uh, increased to five thousand as well, per council request. The proposed personnel changes haven't, um, very much, but they are, there's roughly about a thirty-eight thousand dollar decrease. And this was due to us fine tuning the personnel, um, annual costs, thanks to the PCB provided by HR. Aside from that, there's no other changes. There are no changes to fleet recommendations.
Uh, it is important to establish various reserves to ensure the city can withstand economic down, downturns and other financial shortfalls, including those which occur when liability claims exceed estimates. For that reason, staff will be bringing forward a workers' compensation reserve policy recommendation, which includes a reserve balance target in the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Pending adoption of the reserve, stack is, staff is recommending designating two million dollars of existing workers' compensation fund balance, which is currently estimated to be ten point two million dollars, uh, as the workers' compensation reserve. At its regular meeting on June fifth, the city's Board of Public Utilities Commissioners adopted the fiscal year twenty twenty-six enterprise utility budgets in the amounts shown here.
The board also adopted the, the requested personnel changes. And the only net decrease of that was from what we showed the council at the June third meeting was a net decrease of about forty-nine hundred dollars. The mere technician dropped down to sixty-five thousand, an estimated net cost. The principal account, uh, went up by a hundred dollars, making it even one hundred forty-five thousand dollars. There also were no changes to the adopted vehicles by the board.
That concludes our presentation, uh, staff is happy to answer your questions.
So with the presentation from staff, I will open the public hearing. On that, I'm gonna op- uh, we opened public hearing for eight point two, adoption of the city of Tulare fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. Is there anyone in chambers who wishes to speak towards the, towards the city's twenty twenty-six budget? And Clark, do we have anyone on the phone? Okay, no one present in chambers and no one on the phone. So with that, I will close the public hearing. And we'll look, uh, Mr. Mondell, any other, uh, final points post staff?
Just if council has questions.
Okay, council members, I will start with, um, our Vice Mayor, Mr. Harold.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Segala.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, um, one thing that I wanted to discuss, uh, that I've brought up in the past, last council meeting and the last couple of years has been, uh, trying to set aside some measure Y funds uh, for at-risk youth, you know, today we had a perfect example of some of the explorers that are part of the police department. You know, it's a great program, I've supported it, you know, uh, as best as I can with, uh, some of the ARPA funds we had and a lot of council members supported. Obviously, the chief and PD, it's a perfect example of how, you know, keeping kids busy, uh, you know, keeps them out of trouble. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, last time, we spent, uh, we have spent a lot of money, I mean, I would say, uh, I mean, fourteen, fifteen million dollars that the staff has really done well to bring, to identify for the homeless. Uh, you know, uh, which is pretty well spent, but I would venture to say that not even one percent of that kind of money has been brought in for youth, you know, to help keep, uh, kids off the street, get them out of trouble. And, uh, the city attorney, uh, and Melissa sent me the language of measure Y from when it was, uh, brought before voters. And it talks about, you know, the process and what it could be spent for in the city council making decisions on what, uh, historically had been identified as priorities, you know, uh, the financial, the homeless, uh, a number of things. Uh, I, I don't know if it was under Mario's purview, but a couple of months ago, we had some, uh, studies that came back or maybe it had been under the Parks Department that talked about, uh, uh, to keeping kids off the street was a priority for residents. Uh, it was a survey done and that was in the top three or four, uh, I mean, uh, so I think the city residents understand the importance of that. In the homeless, uh, term sheet budget, the, uh, uh, well, let me back up. The staff has done a great job in predicting that measure Y funds would be about a million dollars for the year. Uh, conservative estimates, right? And, uh, but in the homeless, uh, funding, they only are using nine hundred thousand of that million. And that's as far as I can tell, so there's about a hundred thousand, because I've been advocating for ten percent of measure Y funds to be set aside for at-risk youth, uh, I've talked to, uh, you know, Chris about some ideas. Uh, I had the idea of maybe using that money to hire kids in the summer next year, uh, or a summer program to keep them off the streets. At-risk youth, maybe some continuing support for the explorers, but I think it's important that the city, uh, make a decision that homelessness is important, but also our kids. We have about four hundred homeless in the city, and we have at least thirty thousand people that are under eighteen. And so, um, so again, that would be something that I would ask council to consider, setting aside ten percent of measure Y funds to help, uh, at-risk youth work with the city manager and the department head, and maybe the chief of police to figure out what would be the best way to use that funding to make sure that, uh, some of our youth in the city don't end up in jail, don't end up dead, don't end up, uh, on drugs, that we can help out a little bit, so that's my only request of the budget, uh. Mr. Mayor, and I believe that, uh, the city council can do that based on the language of measure Y.
Is, is there consensus amongst our budget that we would set aside ten percent of measure Y? There's two. I, I don't see three. I do not see three, on the draw, this time.
So can I, I guess, I'm just trying to understand, so I, I then I would make, uh, the formal motion that, uh, you know, versus the consensus that, that get the formal motion to set aside ten percent of measure Y funds for at-risk youth in our city, I, you know, I know Mr. Harold appreciate his second on that, if he's willing to second that motion, and then I would ask for a roll call.
I'll second.
So I know we did the consensus, which I guess if the consensus is in order to our city attorney, a formal motion request that this for the budget is in order. All right, so there we. Opportunity to at least discuss this, I know this came, um, and I'm, I know there's a motion on the floor, but, um, just so, uh, it's not perceived that my vote, which will be no to this, is that I don't care about uh, at-risk youth. As these items come up that deal with that, you know, we, we contributed money for a swimming pool for our youth. We've contributed ever other programs with Park and Rec, uh, we've, we've, uh, uh, you know, our, our park, we've, we do that, um, as these items come up, we'll still be able to deal with them, right? At this issue was addressed when the request was made to put it on, uh, the agenda and we had a vote. I'm satisfied with the budget, the way it's being presented now and those issues that it's dealing with. And if you want to go ahead, I, I just wanted to explain what my no vote will be.
And, and that's the same for me, I, I would vote no for this, uh, but that doesn't mean that I didn't spend forty years of my life working with at-risk kids every day, every day. Uh, so that's not why I would be voting no on that, and I do think there's other ways for us to address those issues rather than taking, uh, changing the budget at this time.
Just to be clear, Mr. City Manager, we do have the purview to say, to change the city budget up to the final vote, do we?
Yes, you could change the budget.
I, I think for everything, I haven't heard anything that's out of order, we, uh, any additional comments? We have a motion in a second to allocate ten percent, to reallocate ten percent of measure Y, all in favor? Okay, well entertained, roll call, Madam Clark?
Councilmember Segala? Vice Mayor Harold?
Aye.
Councilmember Maderas?
No.
Councilmember Sarah? Mayor Isherwood?
No.
Motion fails, two to three.
Okay. Councilmember Maderas?
I have nothing to add, I'm ready to adopt.
Councilman Sarah? So I, I think with that, in the motion of a, a reallocation of measure Y, specifically here, I, I would look towards, I think the council, and what I understood a consensus that council did, was set aside fifty thousand dollars much for the arts. There, it's done, I think in the spirit of understanding, we don't have a specific request in front of us. We don't have a specific plan in front of us, and that's okay, because the overall dynamic of the arts and we want to set fifty thousand dollars aside to have that available when something presents itself. Coming through and a specific allocation of measure Y, is, it's the protocol to that, to tell staff suddenly, and, and, you know, council, it's the process between what we're telling staff and what council could do to say, by the way, we're gonna take ten percent, we're gonna completely set that aside. Noble causes, by all means, but again, there isn't an actual what it is, how it would be applied, what we're doing or presentation. Speaking for myself, could entertain, especially in the budget process, we want X amount of dollars to do this, we want X amount of dollars to do that. Uh, the arts conversation came out of that, some councilor, there was some discussion on various other items, yes or no. So to come, to come back through it and have a generalization where I think council was supportive but discretionary of fifty thousand dollars to put for my, the way I would put it in a lockbox or to set it aside for that, to come back in and have an unbeknownst amount of ten percent and completely set that aside. I have approached that with caution of telling the city to book something that we don't know how it's gonna be booked, a specific amount when we don't know what that specific amount is. The notion and the method is, I think more that, the method is the issue, it's the process, rather, the support in the context, where's it come from? Hey, we got a parks master plan, um, I can speak for myself. Part of it is some lights issue, there's different things, that project that council members have said we concerned to do. We're going into the homeless shelter, we have some subjective items that we're working through. I think here, at this point, to specifically make a notion as I'm in concluding and repeating myself of just ten percent of something, um, is not where I'm at today. Totally entertain, and I think some of the goals that all council members have said that we want to come back to and we work through this budget. There's been some expressed frustration of when and how we keep those conversations alive. And we're gonna have some studies and opportunities, and I think to all council members being up here, I want to communicate with everybody. When those times present themselves, as we just went through this budget, if we wanted to add a hundred thousand dollars to youth baseball, youth baseball, or if we wanted to give four hundred thousand dollars to expand this program, this was a good time to do it. Other opportunities will present themselves and always happy to hear of what we need to do, uh, to do that and to work through that process. So as Councilman Madero said, that's why my no vote is mainly the protocol behind it, but let's definitely stay in touch with each other, and let's definitely keep those items in front of us as we move forward.
Uh, I might add that, you know, we, we, when someone talks about ten percent, the public generally doesn't know what's the amount. Okay, I mean, uh, we voted, do you know what the amount is of ten percent? To put for youth programs, uh, when, when we make that vote, what, what is ten percent that you voted? Well, reality is, it's somewhere in between a hundred thousand and a hundred and twenty thousand. If we find the right youth programs that we all as a consensus and by a vote agree to do, we can spend that money in that fashion. But I agree with the mayor in the sense of just arbitrarily saying a number without a sp- uh, specifics. That's why I voted the way I did.
Any other comments or questions about the budget, or is the city, or is the council members ready to add?
I'm ready to make a motion, and if, uh, unless anyone has any comments. I'll, I'll, uh, make a motion to adopt a resolution approving and adopting the city of Tulare's uh, fiscal year twenty twenty six budget totaling one million, one hundred and seventy seven million, nine hundred thirty eight, three hundred and thirty dollars, including a general fund operating budget where revenues plus operating transfers in equal expenditures plus operating tr- transfers out, et cetera, et cetera, specifically as stated by the recommended action in item eight point two. And that, that's as to item one. The resolution described therein in item two, the resolution set forth in item three, and to adopt the updated strategic plan.
I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. As noted for the budget resolution, um, as presented by staff, the attachments. Can we have a roll, because it's the budget, can we have a roll call vote? Yes, we'll have a roll call vote. Matt, Madam Clerk, can you please roll? Can you, ah, do a roll call, vote of the council?
Councilmember Maderas.
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye.
Councilmember Segala, Vice Mayor Harold.
Aye.
Mayor Isherwood.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I put my agenda away.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Thank you for the presentation. Moving forward, number nine, general business. Well, we already, number nine, sorry, number ten, yeah, I'll get there. Like I said, I put my, I put my agenda on the notes away, and so I'm going off the other one. Future agenda items, then submitted, number, uh, we'll move to item eleven, staff updates. I always start, Mr. Orp, how are you, sir? Think I saw you were here tonight.
Uh, nothing to report at this time.
All right.
Uh, just one item, we have organized a replacement blood drive for the city employee that was in the accident, um, a couple of months ago. So I will forward you the flyers, um, you're welcome to sign up or drop by the event to support the employees that are gonna be donating blood, and you're welcome to share it with anybody outside of the organization, organization as well.
Earlier this evening, we had two individuals, uh, bring up concerns about the roundabout at Tulare and Morrison Street. I will reach out to Caltrans and forward those, uh, complaints to the appropriate person there. Also, I wanted you to be aware that there is a, um, an issue with the electrical meters being set by Southern California Edison that would, um, allow for the installation of the flashing beacons. It's doesn't, not a big delay, but that's, there, there is additional signage in the form of a flashing beacon coming that should help at least driver awareness.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Nothing else to report tonight.
Nothing else, thank you.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Nothing to report.
Okay, all right.
It is, uh, Supreme Court opinion season. I don't see anything that's gonna affect the city, but if something comes up, I'll let you know.
Mr. Mondell, you have the last one?
I'm so sorry, but I do have a couple. Uh, one, council asked if we could have tickets for a, the upcoming concert. Clint Black, uh, has donated gifts, uh, and the operators agreed to that, so he will coordinate with Melissa and we'll put that in place. Um, the Tbiz ribbon cutting was being planned for Thursday, July tenth. We're gonna have to push that to the end of July. The chamber has asked that they have more time to be able to. We, we think the facility will be completed by July first, but they want more time to make sure not only one, that everything is completed, but two, they have chance to kind of put their stuff, equipment, et cetera, into the building. The dog park, we've, we've had mostly positive comments. We've had a few folks ask about if we could, uh, add, uh, dog toys, like fake fire hydrants and ramps and balls and things out there for the dogs to play with. So we're gonna be working on that now that adopted budget has occurred. We'll also work towards adding more rules and regulations and clarifications about what qualifies a large dog versus a small dog, and we're also working on some additional shade over time out there. Um, I won't be at the league meeting next week. Thomas will be there. We have a number of other staff that'll be there. Hopefully you can be there. Uh, I'll have to attend a CTC meeting in Sacramento to try to see if we can get us some more money for our interchange in Highway ninety nine. And the last, the most important one, Thomas will be there tomorrow morning, seven AM, every Wednesday, June, July, and August, yoga in the park at Zomwol Park, seven AM. Mr. Bender, I've just mentioned that for your benefit. So we hope to see you there, thank you. Oh, and congratulations to everyone for the budget adoption. Mark, Jacob, great work, all the directors. You know, we've been moving from, we're may be be putting more responsibility on the directors over time for them to work on their budgets and adopt their budgets. We still have a long way to go in terms of our cooperation and communication and coordination. It's, it's very challenging, especially with us adopting a new ERP system. But I, I feel better about where we're ending up this year in the budget. I feel better about where we're heading next year. We'll continue to work on that, um, and make that process better as we go. Thank you.
Wanted to add one of those things on the dog park. Uh, I've, I've gone there a few times and people have asked for more benches. So I don't know, I mean, I kind of mapped it out and you could probably add another three or four benches to each of the, uh, sites, 'cause, uh, when I go there, people are playing musical chairs for those benches, so.